Thank you. Okay. Welcome to our Committee of the Whole meeting on Monday, March 25th. Good to see so many of you join us in person tonight. I'm Councillor Jennifer Miller. I'll be your chair this evening. Councillor McGuire will be joining us shortly. Please pause and reflect as I read the land acknowledgement. On March 25th, 2024, we acknowledge that this sacred land on which Smiths Falls is now located has been a site of human activity for over 10,000 years and is rich in indigenous history. This land is the ancestral and unceded territory of the Algonquin Anishna'vi Nation. We are grateful to the Algonquin ancestors who cared for the land and water in order that we might meet here today. We are also grateful to the Algonquin people for their contribution in the making of the Rideau Canal, which runs through Smiths Falls. We are mindful of broken covenants and the need to reconcile with all of our relations. Together, may we care for this land and each other, drawing on the strength of our mutual history of nation building through peace and friendship, being mindful of generations to come. So I'll call the meeting to order at 5:01 PM. And could I have someone make a motion to approve the agenda? Councillor Robinson, seconded by Councillor McKenna, all in good. Carrie, thank you. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest or conflicts of interest or general nature thereof? Seeing none, can I have someone to approve our minutes, please? Moved by Councillor Robinson, seconded by Councillor Quinn, that the minutes of the February 26th, 2024, and March 11th, 2024 Committee of the Whole meetings be approved as circulated. I'm pleased to welcome Anne Muskeley here this evening, who will join us at our podium to speak to us about the indoor structure of pickleball. Thanks, Anne.
A lot of good time. Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the councillors. I'm Anne Muskeley. Born and raised here in Smiths Falls, I've been involved in sports all my life here. I'm here to represent the Smiths Falls Seniors Harmony Club 162, under the support and direction of Bud Fossett. And we are all members, like all of our pickleball people are all members of the senior club. When we see empty space going derelict on a main artery running through town, we can't help but think it's also ideal for an indoor structure. It makes so much sense. As an example, adding on to the existing senior centre and taking over the unused lawn bowling with an extension that would increase capacity for the senior centre, more room for events that are badly needed, and storage because it needs better safety and fire code upbringing. They already have washrooms and they already have septic. They already have parking. It's close to the hospital and it's close to downtown. Pickleball is the fastest growing sport in North America for many years. We've been playing here in different locations since 2017. We have been playing indoor summer and winter at the senior centre as members, but it can only accommodate one court. That's eight people. We have over 100 players. It does focus on seniors 55 plus with people in their early 80s playing. It develops physical, mental, and social wellbeing. It also could focus on our town and its tourism agenda, being a UNESCO heritage. What we desperately need is council to help us develop indoor space. We would be more than willing to take part in a committee to brainstorm other ideas, to take note. We have six, not 12, outdoor courts that unfortunately were not surfaced properly in 2018. And they're badly cracked. If it rains, we can't play. And the lighting out there, even in the summer, after 7:38, you can't play. There's two lights. So it's not out of them. Pickleball is a year-round sport. The senior centre has over 250 members now and climbing, but we have to deny people every week. I get phone calls and emails and so does Bud. We've asked Stephanie Clark to address some grants and we were told that that's something we have to do. I came to council a few years ago and I was told I would hear back. It never happened. Tournaments are a huge draw to many towns and cities with many activities, especially pickleball. Our own memorial centre, even with a cement floor, is an excellent place. And in fact, this year will be the second year Jason Delorme will be running the nonprofit Michael Hicks Pickleball Memorial. It brings awareness to addictions and mental health issues with a guaranteed $5,000 donation. It draws people from as far away as Montreal, New York State, Kingston, Ottawa, and Quebec, just to name a few. Pickleball could be a money-generated sport for the town with yearly memberships, drop-ins, use of hours, and a little upkeep. The cost, however, to rent the memorial centre is out of reach for us and the smaller groups. Jason is paying a large amount and he is doing all the work with his volunteers, like the setup and the takedown. In conclusion, volleyball and basketball are also, I've been approached, are badly needed and wanted in the town and could survive again with something indoors. Logistically, things take time, but time for our seniors shouldn't be on the back burner. I would like to invite all of you to come out and watch or even try some of the activities and games that are offered, including pickleball. But Bud does shuffleboard, he does darts, he does cards, he does exercise, there's yoga, and there could be so much more. There's only seven days in a week. We just can't do it. So, thank you for your time and consideration. That's it.
Thank you so much. Would you stay there in case we have questions?
Okay.
I'll just start by saying congratulations to you and to Bud and to all of your folks for the growth, because I think that's a sign of how successfully run the programs are. But I'll turn it over to my colleagues if there are any questions for Anne.
Sure. Thanks, Anne. And obviously pickleball has grown immensely in recent years and we look across, I guess, the world and here, especially in Florida and places where seniors are gathering, it's...
It's millions.
So it's really encouraging. And obviously, it's great. We know the benefits of exercise are vast, but... So we've had, so the outdoor courts, and sadly, they have not held up the way we had hoped, obviously. So I know that does create some limitations there. But indoors, where do you go now in the winter besides the senior centre? Or are you able to work with school boards?
We have Chemo through Jason Delorme. He has to get a contract in August. Again, very expensive. So we subcontract from him for two nights. He carries the insurance and we have three courts there. But we could have on good nights, 12 courts.
Okay, so three just your...
Oh, it's just packed.
And likely to grow.
And, yeah, yeah. Like Brockford's just put in a bright, big, huge outdoor space. And they also, a gentleman out there, this is just in retrospect, he bought the Zellers when it went out of business. And it is unbelievable what he's done with that space. He has pickleball, he has axe throwing, he has volleyball, he has everything in there. And pay-as-you-go, and he's making money.
And now is there, I mean, I think recognizing volleyball, basketball, everything that we could probably, court space in town, I guess, is a premium. But it's, so it's one, I guess, existing courts are expensive and it's not big enough...
Like the public schools, except for Chemo, they're too small. Their gyms are built too small.
Okay. So I guess the ask would be to maybe embark, be willing to embark on a bit of a journey here to see about the possibilities. And obviously, a capital, a new build of some type is going to be multi-millions before we build something that would be suitable. Or is there existing space that could be reused or repurposed, I guess? I don't know if that's a possibility.
Now, if you can find it, because I haven't...
You've looked at everything.
I've been everywhere, everywhere. I mean, Samir owns a lot of them and he's got them all in use, including the Zellers, which would have been a perfect spot for everything. But I mean, the senior centre definitely needs more space, too, so...
Well, we have a growing population of seniors. We'll all be there at some point in time.
I think I'm already there.
Thank you. Councillor McKenna, who's not, do you have a question?
No, I have Councillor Brennan.
Oh, thank you, Councillor Brennan.
There we go. Thanks very much. Hi, Anne.
Hi.
We've talked, yeah, we've talked in the last little while about this and I encourage you to come to talk to us about your club and senior centre, but specifically the pickleball. And since we've talked, I looked at our Parks and Recreation Master Plan and it does acknowledge that there is limited use of schools for, you know, winter activities other than hockey. And so I think that in that plan, there's mention of engaging in, talking about a multi-use facility. And it also mentions in the plan that the youth arena ice plant is nearing end of life. And when that comes, it's time to talk about whether to renew that or use it for something else. So I really, I'm really happy that you came. I think that, you know, with 100-plus members in a pickleball club...
Oh, I think we've lost Councillor Brennan.
People and people like me that are in their 60s now. I'm really happy that you came. I think that we should, we should let drop, we should keep this in focus and I think that we should look at alternatives for you people and, you know, are we talking about pickleball, soccer? As you mentioned, basketball is, so everyone's screaming for indoor sports in the winter. And so I want to thank you for coming and I would encourage staff to come back to us with some sort of idea or plan to keep this going, but we got to keep it going. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Councillor Quinn, you have a question?
Anne, thank you. You're so enthusiastic and so are these people, so enthusiastic. So we know with enthusiasm like that, that you can keep this alive. And I agree with Councillor Brennan, let's keep it here on the table. Let's really start asking questions. Let's have a good look at this and see what can happen. And maybe, maybe what can happen right now is just small, but we can grow. As long as you can see the growth coming, you know, then, then it's, because maybe it's someplace like you couldn't, you could rent or something we could help with that way. But, but let's get it started. Feet on the ground, let's get moving. Thank you.
CAO Morris, it sounds that we have two issues here, the pickleball and the senior centre. Do you think this is something the staff could come back to us and report on?
Yeah, absolutely. So there's a couple of moving parts here. Certainly, the, we're in the midst of a long-term arrangement with the Lawn Bowling Club, so we will need to consider that. We're also doing the feasibility of the youth arena, as Councillor Brennan had indicated. So we'll be bringing forward recommendations on the future of that facility. So, so I think there's great opportunity ahead. There's also the Rideau Community Services Health Centre, that proposal that's out there. Once a location is chosen, there is an opportunity for a recreation element to that facility. So, so I think there's a couple of different avenues we could look at to keep the conversation going and we will bring those back.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your time, Anne, and for your presentation.
Thank you.
Take care. Okay. We have four CAO and Director reports this evening. I'll let you lead us through those.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First up, we have Director McMunn.
Thank you, CAO Morris, and good evening, Your Worship and Members of Council and Madam Chair. Just a quick report this evening. I wanted to let council know of a number of notable procurement documents that we put out recently for some of the work we've been afforded to do in 2024. Most notably is the little thing we're working on at the water tower. So I'm pleased to say that that tender has gone out and it closes on April 4th. So that's, that's great. That will stage us well for getting shovels in the ground in 2024. George Street Phase 1, we tendered that one just recently as well. It closes on April 11th. And Jason Barlow, Urban Utilities, has a primary and final tank gate replacement project tendered as well. It closes on April 11th. And the municipal class EA for solids handling at the water pollution control plant as well. It closes on April 18th. We also have a number of annual, very lengthy list of annual maintenance-related works that we have tendered as well now, as well for the upcoming season. And I should note that all of these projects I noted earlier are posted to bids and tenders and are available for bidders everywhere. So that's my, my report. Thank you.
Great to see this work getting started. Any questions?
Okay. Thank you.
Next, we have our Manager of Economic Development and Tourism, Ms. Crowe.
Thank you and good evening. Just a quick update, we are hosting our annual job fair on April 10th from 1:00 to 5:00 PM. It'll be at the youth arena this year. We're working in partnership with our local business support organisations like the Chamber of Commerce, Ontrack, the DBA, our ESPEC, and Valley Heartland as well. So I wanted to let council and community know that that's coming up. There's still available spots for any employers who are looking to hire this year, either for summer students or full-time positions. They can reach out to Ontrack in order to register. It's free, free for them, free for the community. And then we encourage the community to come down on April 10th from 1:00 to 5:00 PM at the youth centre if they're looking for new employment opportunities with them too.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks. Next, we have our Manager of Development Services, Mr. Greck.
Good evening. Two quick updates from Development Services this evening. Firstly, on behalf of our Chief Building Official, I'd like to highlight to council as well as those watching at home that our new electronic permitting portal is now live. Electronic building permitting allows users to submit building and demolition permits online as well as 24/7, as well as upload required drawings and documentation, request or submit changes to their billing permit, and also check on the status of the permit application at any time. So there is a built-in system of prompts throughout to ensure that users include all the required information, drawings, and documentation on their application to allow it for, to be completed and processed as efficiently as possible. It has gone live on our website within the last couple of weeks and the Chief Building Official advises that there's been some decent uptake. About half of our, half of the permit applications that we've been looking at in the last little while have been submitted electronically and will continue to accept the paper submissions at the front desk as they've, as they've come in historically. But users are encouraged to try out the permitting portal on our building and renovation section of the website. Second update is a brief one on the Heritage Conservation District Study. As council will recall, StanTech was contracted to undertake the HCD study for our downtown core. Staff had a meeting with the consultant team last week and they're in the midst of their, the research and, and field study phase of the work. This week, two members of the consultant team will be exploring our downtown streets, doing their field work, which includes documenting the built form of the buildings in the study area. The consultants will be taking pictures, but will be staying in the public right-of-way. Anyone is welcome to stop by and say hello. However, council and the public are advised that there will be a more in-depth public consultation later on this, this spring with the first of two public information sessions pencilled in for, for late May or early June. We will keep council up to date once this is finalized and that'll also provide the, the public and our community the opportunity to liaise with the project team and, and tell the project team what is important to our community in terms of the heritage in the downtown. So stay tuned for more information on that.
Thank you. Any questions, Councillor McKenna?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thanks, Mr. Greck. I'm really happy about the software for building permits applications and curious, was it in-house, something developed or both? Do we, are they out there in the market and we purchased one to suit your needs, our needs?
So we're working with CGIS through that, for that, that project. And CGIS provides a variety of, of mapping and mapping software for that, as well as software that assists the building, building staff in reviewing applications and for other departments to participate in that process. But there's, there's a number of companies that partner with municipalities for, for this sort of work.
So lots of features besides the four. Thank you. It's great.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Manager Greck. We appreciate that.
And lastly, Madam Chair, we have, I want to share with the committee and those watching, a significant announcement that Premier Ford made last week, last Thursday. So within that announcement, there was a little bit of existing funding, but it was a $1.8 billion investment in infrastructure generally, but with a focus on housing. So it's relevant to the town of Smiths Falls because 800, sorry, 825 million of that pot of money is earmarked for the Housing Enabling Water Systems Fund. You may recall that, that program. We talked about it recently. We're preparing to make an application for the water, for the water tower and trunk main project. It was 200 million, fairly modest sum given the size of Ontario, but it's been increased to 825 million. So that bodes very, very well for the application I think that we're going to make in a couple of weeks. The other element, the other portion of that 1.8 billion is, is meant to shore up an existing program called the Building Faster Fund with the express purpose, of course, of building more housing. So as it stands right now, Smiths Falls is not eligible for that funding. It's meant for municipalities with a population that's expected to be 50,000 or more by the year 2031. We're not in that category. But those municipalities, I think there are, I think there are 20, I think there are 30-some of them, anyway, in the province that have over 50,000 people. They've been given housing targets by the province and if they meet the target, they get funding for it. So the extra amount of money, the extra billion dollars will be earmarked towards that program. But there is a proviso in the announcement that says 120 million of the extra billion will be earmarked for small rural and northern municipalities. So no details yet, but that's a very important element of this announcement that we'll keep an eye on and report back once we have more details on the, the focus of the funding and the criteria for the funding. So all around, good news for municipalities in Ontario and we hope to tap into what we think would, should be our portion of that very big financial announcement.
Thank you. Any questions for CAO Morris? Your fingers are crossed. Thank you very much. Okay. No Committee of the Whole consent reports. So we are going to move in camera here shortly. We have two items to discuss, but we shouldn't be too, too long. So if I could have a motion by Councillor Robinson, seconded by Councillor Quinn, that we move in camera? All in favour? Thank you. We'll be back shortly. Thank you. We'll be back shortly.
Thank you, thank you all for your patience. We have two items on our rise and report. The first is on the committee appointment. We're going to add priority item 10.9. Correct, Clerk Costello?
Correct.
Thank you. And the second item, we gave staff direction on the second in camera. And so we'll move ahead with our priority issues. And I would ask Manager Barlow to come and talk about his report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of council. My first report tonight, 2024-033, is the 2023 Water Pollution Control Plant Performance Report. The purpose of this report is to update the mayor, members of the public, and anyone who is interested on the operations of the wastewater treatment facility for the year of 2023. The report's put together as a requirement from the MECP and must be submitted to them prior to March 31st of every year. And being prudent on that, we ensure that council also has the opportunity to view this report so you can see what goes on in the operations. And you can ask any questions or inquire on anything that you see that comes out of the report. So a quick overview, as a lot of the information in here has been brought forth to council with our quarterly reports that we started this year. So there's not really any new information. Everything has been presented through those reports over the years. So we were able to get kind of some insight into the operations during each of those times of the year that we presented those reports. A couple of items to note for the flow reports for this year, or for 2023, sorry. We are at 50% capacity at the wastewater plant. So that's an improvement over the years previous. We were closer to 70-75% capacity. So that has a lot to do with our non-revenue water on the water side. That water's not going into the sewers. We're not required to treat it. And some of it is too, is environmental, which deals with our combined sewers. So you know, the more rain we get, the more flow that we deal with at the wastewater plant. And you'll see through this report, the months of January and then April and May were extremely high-flow times. We had some extreme melt and some really bad storms in that time. So that corresponded to the high flows at the facility. But also, you'll notice in the bypass events. So we had three bypass events at the wastewater plant in 2023. And those were from those extreme weather events. You'll notice the flow is much higher. The flows, the rains we had in April of 2023 were extreme. Operators in both facilities of the plant and out on the street had never seen water flow at that capacity in any of the infrastructure when they've been looking at it. And that's, these are 25, 30-year operators who haven't seen that kind of flow rate through those facilities. So it wasn't extreme, extreme events for both of those times. And the flow was total for those months do kind of show that it's an anomaly. Or it could not necessarily an anomaly, but something that could happen year over year depending on climate change and the events that we have come forward. Solids handling. So we've been having some major issues. It started in 2023 in June. You'll notice that the amount of pellets and solids that we processed were quite a bit lower in June, July, and August of last year. That's corresponded to 2024 as well. But we're having an issue with an unknown substance. We're saying that it's wipes or something else that's being put into the system that with our process for solids handling is creating an issue in our pelletizer. So wipes and things of that nature don't break down. We're able to kind of grind them up best of our ability or remove them from the system with the screens. But there is a substance that's getting through that preliminary treatment. It's ending up in our sludge. And when we process that sludge, our pelletizer process heats everything up to burn off the contaminants. But when it's doing that, it's creating a fluff. So this is, it's a fibrous material that's getting stuck in all our screens. So our pellets are based, there's a lot of screens in there for sizing and different thing. And this product is blocking everything up. So right now, staff, we're operating pretty much on a day-to-day basis. And we're taking two to three wheelbarrow loads of this fluff out of our system every day to be able to run. It created a major issue beginning of December, January this year, where we actually had to truck a lot more sludge out to Ottawa and to a facility in Iroquois to be able to maintain the level. So we don't have, we do our due diligence so that there isn't events where we could have a bypass or exceedance to the limits over and above what we already had in 2023 based on that level of sludge in the facility. Because we don't have a lot of capacity for sludge at the facility as it stands now. And one of the reasons why we have the MCEA for solids handling to give us a better idea in the future of what we need to do to be able to expand or operate that solids handling with better accuracy and a better quality product. And I think that is a quick overview of everything going on at the wastewater facility. So if you have any specific questions, I'd be more than willing to answer those.
Thank you, Councilor McGuire.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Jason. I've got three questions for you. And I don't want to put you on the spot, so maybe it's a quarterly report answer. But I'm wondering, how many millimeters of precipitation do we get when we see it? Like, what's the minimum for an overflow?
It really depends on where it is in the system. Because there is rain events in town which could hit south of the river. We won't see that at the wastewater plant because all of our combined sewers are on the north side. So you know, and if it's a really dry part of the year, the plant and our CSO tank that we have at the wastewater plant will be able to absorb that. So you won't have to bypass. But it all, it's really varies seasonally and where that precipitation or melt or anything takes place.
How many blocks of combined sewer would we have to separate to stop having overflows?
I would not know 100% what that number is. But we do know that there's many kilometers of combined sewers north of the Rideau in all the older areas of town. Beckwood Street was a big one where we saw an impact at the wastewater plant when that was completed. We're hoping that George Street is going to have the same impact moving forward. But there's quite a few areas in there. I'm not sure if the engineering department has a better handle on the exact areas. But it's in that whole general, the old section of Smith Falls that just needs to be upgraded to separate those facilities.
Thank you. Counselor Quinn?
Thank you on that. Just a different question than what I was going to ask and say at first. So when we do the new water tower and the new trunk line, will we be coming in contact with some of those combined sewers that we will then separate?
I believe there is some combined sewers in that area. There's a lot more in that area, a lot more ditches. So that should take care of a lot of stormwater, but there would be some combined sewers in that section. But they wouldn't have as much impact as like George Street, for example, would have.
But they will have some impact.
Yes, yes.
One other thing. Maybe we need to really start to educate people. Because you're running into something within the system that's blocking the screens. And you're getting all this fluff, as you call it, in there. And I just finished reading an article about these wipes that they say they're disposable and flushable and all that, and they're not. The other thing that in that article I read was Kleenexes. They're produced in such a way, so when we're using them, they don't come apart. But they also, if they're flushed, they don't break down. So maybe we really need to be doing a big education piece here. And I know when we did the home show a number of years ago and head joint was here at that time, and Sarah Cook, and they put on a demonstration, and Sarah still has one of the jars that she started with wipes in there, and they have not yet broke down. And I don't think people realize that. So that, maybe that's something. We've got a couple of newspapers that could maybe do a neat article on that. Because people don't realize what it's causing and how much money it's costing.
Through the chair? Yeah, there are many campaigns all over North America and possibly, I don't know what's happening in other parts of the world. But campaigns on these non-flushable disposable wipes. You know, we've been trying to coat tail off of them to get the information we need. Our problem right now is we're trying to find a location with the labs we have to even analyze what this material is. So we don't, because it's broken down and because of what we're creating, we're having a hard time right now. We've been searching through some facilities. Our next step is to look at possibly Ottawa U or some different universities to see if they have some different equipment. But right now, it's, we don't exactly know what it is. If we knew exactly what it was, then it'd be much easier to target. So we're trying now to target some institutions to see if they did change some processes over the last 12 months that may have impacted us. So we're taking the steps. It's just taking a little bit of time to do so.
Excellent. You're taking the steps. Thank you. Counselor McGuire, I cut you off, and you had one last question.
My question was on the, whatever the substance is too. Is it something that people are seeing across Ontario, or is it localized to Smith Falls?
Right now, this is localized to Smith Falls. There has been many issues in the past. That's why I said there's campaigns that take place specifically in Ontario. There's a group that I know our compliance coordinator is involved with. And they deal with the non-flushable wipes and trying to deal with the manufacturers to stop putting flushable tags on certain packages because they're not a flushable or compostable part of the system. So it costs us money to remove those from the system. So there is groups that are working towards trying to find a reasonable answer to all those kind of issues.
Thank you. Mayor Panko and then...
Thanks, Jason. So we have three bypass events, secondary bypass. And so that, whatever the fluid has gone through is already been through primary treatment. So I assume, I mean, the risk to the environment on the other end is relatively modest when those things happen. But is there a possibility with some of the storm systems we are seeing and even the capacity for CSO tank, that, I mean, we could see something? Is there any risk of, I guess, an earlier bypass?
In other words, before we even got primary treatment looked after? I would hope not, but at this day and age, anything's a possibility. To pay, like, those flow events, the rain events that we did have were extreme. So let's hope that, knock on wood, that that's kind of the worst we see. But with that, we did exceed our objectives in April because of those flow events. So that, those flows and based on the numbers you saw, there's a highlighted value for our objectives in the water quality report from the wastewater plant for the month of April that did exceed our limits. And the reason...
Extremely high flow times. We had some extreme melt and some really bad storms in that time. So that corresponded to the high flows at the facility. But also you'll notice in the bypass events, so we had three bypass events. Uh, the wastewater plant in two zero twenty-three. And those were from those extreme weather events. Um, you'll notice the flow is much higher, uh, the, the flows, the rains we had in April of two zero twenty-three. Uh, where were extreme. Operators in both facilities of the plant and out on the street. Had never seen water flow at that capacity in any of the infrastructure when they've. Uh, been looking at it and that's, these are. They're twenty-five, thirty-year, uh, operators who haven't seen that kind of flow rate, uh, through those facilities. So. Um, it wasn't extreme, extreme events, uh, for both of those times. And the flow was total for those months do kind of show that it's an anomaly. Or it could not necessarily an anomaly, but something that could happen year over year depending on climate change and the, and the events that we have come forward. Um, solids handling, so, uh, we've been having some major issues. It started in two zero twenty-three in June. You'll notice that, uh, the amount of pellets and solids that we processed. Uh, were quite a bit lower in June, July and August of last year. That's corresponded to two zero twenty-four as well. Um, but we're having an issue with. An unknown substance. We're saying that it's wipes or something else that's being put into the system. That with our process for solids handling, uh, is creating an issue in our pelletizer. So. Uh, wipes and things of that nature don't break down. Um. We're able to kind of grind them up best of our ability, um, or remove them from the system with the screens. But there is a substance that's getting through that, uh, that preliminary treatment is ending up in our sludge. And when we process that sludge. Our pelletizer process heats everything up to, to burn off, uh, the contaminants. Um, but when it's doing that, it's creating a fluff. So this is, it's a fibrous, uh, material that's getting stuck in all our screens. So our pellets are based, there's a lot of screens in there for sizing and different thing. And this product is blocking everything up. So right now staff. Uh, we're operating pretty much on a day-to-day basis and we're taking. Two to three wheelbarrow loads of this fluff out of our system every day to be able to run. Um, it created a major issue beginning of December, January this year. Uh, where we actually had to truck a lot more sludge out, uh, to Ottawa and to a facility in Iroquois. Uh, to be able to maintain the level. So we don't have, uh. Uh, we do our due diligence so that there isn't events where we could have a bypass or, uh, exceedance to the limits. Over and above what we already had in two zero twenty-three, based on that level of sludge. Uh, in the facility because we don't have a lot of capacity for sludge at the facility as it stands now. And one of the reasons why we have the, uh, uh, M C E A for solids handling to give us a better idea in the future of what we need to do to be able to, uh. Expand or operate that solids handling, uh, with better, uh, better accuracy and, and a better quality product. Um, and I think that is a quick overview of, uh, everything going on at the wastewater facility. So if you have any specific questions, I'd be more than willing to. Answer those.
Thank you, Councilor McGuire.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Jason. Um, I've got three questions for you and I don't want to put you on the spot. So maybe it's a quarterly report answer. But I'm wondering how many millimeters of precipitation do we get when we see it? Like, what's the minimum for an overflow?
It, it really depends on where it is in the system because there, there is rain events in town which could hit south of the river. We won't see that at the wastewater plant because all of our combined sewers on the, are on the north side. So, um. You know, and, and if it's a really dry part of the year. The plant and our, uh, C S O tank that we have at the wastewater plant will be able to absorb that. So you won't have to bypass. But it all, it's really varies seasonally and where that precipitation or melt or anything takes place.
Go ahead.
Um, how many blocks of, uh, combined sewer would we have to separate to stop having overflows?
I would not know a hundred percent of what that number is, but we do know that there's many kilometers of combined sewers north of the Rito. Uh, in all the older areas of town. Beckwood Street was a big one where we saw an impact at the wastewater plant when that was completed. Um, we're hoping that George Street is going to have the same impact moving forward, but there's quite a few areas in there. Um. I'm not sure if the engineering department has a better handle on the exact areas. But it's, it's in that whole general, the old section of, uh, Smith Falls that just needs to be upgraded to separate those facilities.
Thank you. Counselor Quinn?
Thank you on that. Just a different question than what I was going to ask and say at first. So when we do the new water tower and the new trunk line, will we be. Coming in contact with some of those combined sewers that we will then separate?
I believe there is some combined sewers in that area. Um, there's a lot more in that area, a lot more ditches. Um, so that should take care of a lot of stormwater, but there would be some combined sewers in that section. But they wouldn't have as much impact as like George Street, for example, would have.
But they will have some.
Yes, yes.
One other thing. Maybe we need to really start to educate people because. You, you're running into something within the system that's blocking the screens. And you're getting all this fluff, as you call it, in there. And I just finished reading an article about, um, these wipes. That they say they're disposable and flushable and all that, and they're not. The other thing that, uh, in that article I read was Kleenexes. They're produced in such a way. So when we're using them, they don't come apart, but they also, if they're flushed, they don't break down. So maybe we really need to be doing a big education piece here. And I know. When we did the home show a number of years ago and Ted Joint was here at that time and Sarah Cook. And they put on a demonstration and Sarah, Sarah still has one of the jars that she started. With, uh, wipes in there and they have not yet broke down. And I don't think people realize that. So that, maybe that's something. We've got a couple of newspapers that could maybe do a neat article on that because people don't realize what it's causing and how much money it's costing.
Through the chair. Um, yeah, there, there, there are many campaigns all over North America and possibly the, I don't know what's happening in other parts of the world. Um, but campaigns on these non-flushable. Disposable, uh, wipes. Um, you know, we've been trying to coat tail off of them to get the information we need. Um, our problem right now is we're trying to find a location with the labs we have to even analyze what this material is. So we don't. It, because it's broken down and because of what we're creating, um, we're having a hard time right now. We've been searching through, uh, some facilities. Our next step is to look at possibly, uh, Ottawa U or some different universities to see if they have some different, uh, equipment. But right now it's, we don't know exactly know what it is. If we knew exactly what it was, then it'd be much easier to target. So, uh, we're trying now to target some institutions to see if they did change some processes over the last, uh, twelve months that may have impacted us. So. We're, we're taking the steps. It's just taking a little bit of time to do so.
Excellent. You're taking the steps. Thank you. Counselor McGuire, I cut you off and you had one last question.
Um, my question was on the, whatever the substance is too. Is it something that, uh, people are seeing across Ontario or is it localized to Smith Falls?
Right now, this is localized to Smith Falls. There has been many issues in the past. Uh, that's why I said there's, there's campaigns that take place. Uh, specifically in Ontario, uh, there's a group that I know our compliance coordinator is involved with. And they deal with, uh, the non-flushable wipes and, and trying to deal with the, uh, the manufacturers to stop putting. Uh, flushable tags on certain packages because they're not flushable or compostable part of the system. So. It costs us money to remove those from the system. So there, there is groups that are working towards, uh, trying to find a, a reasonable answer to. All those kind of issues.
Thank you. Mayor Panko and then.
Thanks, Jason. Um. So we have three bypass events, secondary bypass. And so that, that whatever that the fluid has gone through is already been through primary treatment. So I assume the, I mean, the risk to the environment at the other end is relatively modest when those things happen. But. Um, is there a possibility? With some of the storm systems we are seeing and even the capacity for C S O tank that, I mean, we could see something. Is there any risk of, I guess, of an earlier bypass? In other words, before we even got primary treatment looked after?
Um, I, I would hope not, but at, at this day and age, anything's a possibility. Um, to pay like those flow events, the rain events that we did have, uh, were extreme. So, uh. Let's hope that knock on wood that, uh, that that's kind of the, the worst we see. Um, but with that, we did exceed our objectives in April because of those flow events. So. So that, those flows and based on the numbers you saw, there's a highlighted value for our objectives in the, uh. The water quality report from the wastewater plant for the month of April that did exceed our limits. And the reason we did that is because we. Have to do extra sampling during bypass events and those samples, the, the results were elevated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Counselor McKenna?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Could you remind me, uh, in our asset management plan, uh, how much life we've got left in, in this plant? Do you have a sense of, uh, a range?
Uh, I don't through asset management, but through operate, like a, through, uh, an operational perspective, we've reduced the. Uh, used capacity. So we're gaining capacity by lowering the flow rates. Um, so that would be the only parameter I would be able to say that, you know, there, there is space to grow. But there is with the technology and different things that are out there. That's why we're doing the municipal class EA for solids handling. Because we do have to, to, to spruce up, um, some of those areas to be able to, to handle. Uh, future growth and, and have a better ability to deal with what's coming to the wastewater plant.
So, so if we keep investing in it and keeping it upgraded, that plant has a shelf along and if our growth stays. You're, as you said, fifty percent capacity. So. So it, it doesn't, uh. It's not like the water tower gets the shelf life and it's reached the end of its life. It's. As long as we keep investing.
That's right. Yeah, through the chair, I believe, working with the new Director of Corporate Services and Treasurer. Uh, he'll have us on the right track to ensure that the funds are available as required to be able to, to move these projects and keep the operations running.
So I know Counselor Brennan has a question, but maybe in response to that, I see, um, Director McMann with his hand up.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just wanted to augment what Jason was saying by, you know. As, as long as we continue to invest in the, in the water, water pollution control plant. Uh, that's, that's one piece of the puzzle. The other piece of the puzzle is to continue with our reconstruction efforts where we're dealing with. Sewer separation up in the north end of town, north of the Rito River. So you marry those two up together. Those two operations will hopefully increase capacity at the plant. Maybe more so than, you know, we get that number from fifty percent lower with perhaps the work we do on George Street because every street helps. Um, of course, we can't control Mother Nature and the weather, but we can do what we can in terms of investment into, into that part of the system.
Thank you. Counselor Brennan?
Yeah, just a comment. Thank you, Jason, for your work and, uh. I, I've never known anybody so into this stuff and I'm grateful that you are. But the good news is the fifty percent. Uh, we were at seventy, you said before, and now we're at, we've got fifty percent capacity. I know that we did a tour at the start of the term. That was one of my questions, like how much more? Because we have a lot of development coming into town. And now it's, it's comforting to know, it's vital to know that we have the, uh, the means to, to handle that development going forward. So thanks a lot.
Thank you. So, uh, moving along, you have a second report for us, Madam Chair.
I do. So I will now move on to, uh, report two zero two four dash zero three four. And this is our two zero twenty-three, two zero twenty-four, uh, M E C P, uh, inspection report and the rating report that goes along with that. Uh, I presented our summer report for water a couple of weeks ago. I was not expecting the results in this, from this report to come so soon. Um, so, uh, I'm glad it did because it's, it's. Great to always present, uh, these positive news and the outcomes that we have. Um, but, uh, this report is for information so that counselor in the public, counselors in the public are aware. Um, of the inspection report, uh, the results of the report and our inspection rating, uh, for the municipality, uh, dealing with the water systems. Um, a couple items that are in the report, uh, there was a, a compliance response required. Um, so based on the report, as I did talk about when I did the summer report, is that, uh. Leaks in the tower are considered spills. Okay, we, as a municipal, like as, uh, water systems operations, we're not aware that that was the case. We knew if there was an overflow event and an event. Where the water was going onto the road into a storm, not being decordinated, it was a spill and we would classify them as such and make the phone calls. We did not, we're not aware that a leak from the tower onto the grass, which really isn't impacting. Uh, much is considered a spill. So that is part of this, uh. Uh, reporting of compliance. So we now have a procedure in place. And through this, uh, the ministry, the ministry inspector was also asking for clarification on our operations if there was. A more catastrophic event to happen with the tower. Uh, and we provided last week, uh, the ministry inspector with a, uh, an email report. Uh, stating that the plant, as it does when the tower is out for maintenance or servicing, that the plant can still. Accommodate if the tower was not to be able to be serviced until the new tower came in place. That the pumps and the facility could handle, uh, the requirements of the system. Um, until the new tower was constructed. So, uh, you know, another hundred percent rating for, uh, the team in, uh, the water system. So. Uh, I'm proud of, uh, what staff have done and how we've been able to consistently improve. And get to the point we are and, and it's all based on the operations and what they do day to day.
Thank you. Hats off to you and your team for your good work. Got a question from Mayor Panko.
Yes. Great work, Jason. Get bigger than a hundred percent, right? Uh, but one question, um, I note on page one fifty-six in the report. By April first, two thousand twenty-four, the town shall develop and submit to the signed officer a written contingency plan, including updated timelines for the completion of the new water tower. And trunk water main extension. In the event, the current elevated storage tank needs to be taken out of service for an extended period of time or permanently to ensure. The operational integrity of the drinking water system is maintained. Um, is that all been completed or ready for April first, I assume?
That has all been completed. That's part of the, the memo or the, the report that we submitted, uh, as our response to the ministry last week. And we documented all the steps that the officers would take based on our operations manual and what the facility can handle. And ensured that we covered off all the. Items that were of concern and there should be clarity now on what we can do in the event that something does take place. Uh, prior to the completion of the tower, which right now is, uh, expected to be December twenty twenty-five, based on the tender package and our consultants.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks for your reports tonight. Uh, Manager Crowder. Discussion about our former water treatment plant redevelopment.
Thank you again. And through you, Madam Chair, uh, the report before you. Uh, is with regards to a renewal of an exclusivity agreement between the town and the Semir Group for the redevelopment of the water treatment plant. Um, as you know, we were in an agreement that would have ended, um, in January, two zero twenty-four. But based on the fire and dealing with that, um, we put the exclusivity agreement on hold. So. We're able to reengage the proponent, um, now that we have a decision from council on how to move forward with that property. So we're, uh, recommending that council authorize, um, the new exclusivity agreement for a nine-month period that would end, uh, December thirty-first. Uh, two zero twenty-four. All the provisions have remained the same other than the timeline and it also includes, uh, reporting period of a hundred and twenty days. So the first report from the proponent would be in July if we were to move forward. So I'm looking for direction from council and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor McGuire and then McKenna?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Thanks, Julia. I'm wondering what's the advantage of resigning this at this stage? Because I can think of a lot of disadvantages, but I don't really see what the advantages for the town to renew it right now.
That's really up for councils debate and discussion. I think, you know, that we have a long, um. Standing agreement with the proponent and we want to give them the opportunity to, uh, with the new, uh, property and, and the conditions of the property. To come up with something to provide a purchase of, uh, a, um, offer of purchase and then to come up with some conceptual plans for council to consider. So. I think that's, um, one of the benefits. We know who the proponent is, they're local. We have to give them an opportunity, I think, to, um. To provide us with something. And this is a nine-month agreement. The proponent is, um, aware of that and, and. Um, said in good faith that he'd be able to provide us something. We do have the option to back out at any time within, outside of the first a hundred and twenty days. So. If they don't come back with something in July, that could be another opportunity where council could cancel the agreement and, and go in a different direction.
Thank you. Counselor McKenna?
Just, uh, speak in favor of the recommendation from staff. I'm supportive of, uh, of doing this. Uh, my only question was around, uh, given the proximity to the canal waterway. Uh, how have we built, or how will the proponent or the town keep Parks Canada abreast to. Either that a hundred and twenty-day report so that we don't get too far and then find out Parks had a different vision or. There was a problem. I'm not expecting it, but are they at least a, uh. Partner or help monitor the evolution of this?
Through you, Madam Chair. Yeah, there's been lots of discussions with Park, Parks Canada, the proponent, the town. They're very aware that we want to redevelop the property and in support. So they'll have to provide us with guidelines and, and the proponent with guidelines. When they do want to build. Um, and I know through our development process, Parks Canada being a stakeholder, they would be circulated on a site plan application to provide comments on that.
Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Robbins?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I, I think. We probably, if not, if not a legal obligation to extend this contract, we would fire. Uh, we at least have a moral obligation to do it because they couldn't do anything with the property anymore. So, um. I'm going to, I'm going to support the staff recommendation to renew it.
Counselor McGuire, you have another question?
Uh, no, just to make my comment. Um, I'm not going to be supporting the staff recommendation. I think that, uh. There's been two requests for proposals that have gone out for this and both proponents have missed the deadlines for the redevelopment. Uh, since the fire almost a year ago, uh, there's been no progress made and I've seen, uh. No goodwill in the heritage structures. That was a critical part of the application at the beginning. So now we're going into, um, approving the demolition as the engineers have. Put forward from the insurance company that could really make this site undevelopable. And there's still nothing from the proponent. So I'd see no advantage to resigning this at this stage anyway, because it's. If somebody else was to come in and had some kind of an idea and wanted to buy the property for a dollar, I'd want to be open to that. It's a, you know, it's very optimistic to have that, but, uh. I just don't see any advantage to resigning this now. There's, there's, um. There's nothing to come of it until the demolition's over. And once that happens, it's a completely different site. And I think there needs to be a completely new request for proposals because there might be a completely different, um. Group of investors that might be interested in it. So the deal's completely changed. There's no point resigning this tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Quinn.
Thank you. Um, I am going to be supporting this. I guess I've kicked around this table long enough that I've heard all kinds of people come up with ideas. And this proponent is the one that has stayed here with us and they are local. And they were signed and I do believe that we owe them the respect to offer them. The first opportunity here. And you know what? They might say, no, we don't want anything with it, but let's give them the chance. So I'm, I'm supporting this recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Panko and then I'll come to you, Counselor Brennan.
Yeah, I'll, I will also support the staff recommendation. I think it's an exercise of, of good faith. Uh, at the same time, uh, it wasn't until two weeks ago. That committee, I was away on vacation, but committee made the decision to proceed with, uh, the demolition and cleanup of, of the site as a result of the fire. So I think. Really for most of the last year, it's been limbo and, and if I was a contractor looking at development, I would. Uh, to a development, I would be waiting for council or committee's decision, the town's decision on, uh, what was going to happen with the site. So. I think nine months is a reasonable time to provide them with an opportunity to, to now come forward with a proposal. With an understanding of what the site will look like by the time it is turned over to them or they purchase it, uh, so.
Thank you. Counselor Brennan?
Yeah, a hundred percent support staff's recommendation and, uh. The downside would be not to accept staff's recommendation, have it sit in limbo. And then we'll, you know, hope and pray someone is interested in it. This proponent's been interested in this site for, uh, a long time. Uh, there's been a tragic fire. Uh, we've done our due diligence in terms of figuring out what to do with it. Uh, council, the last committee has all made that decision. I support that decision, uh, to demolish it and it's an act of good faith and, and. And thank you for the proponent's interest and continued interest in it. Nine months is, is a reasonable amount of time. So, uh, I support staff's recommendation.
Thank you. And, and I do as well, Manager Crowder. And I stood in your shoes for a number of years and I know how challenging this property has been long before you and long before me. And so. Um, I have, uh, a lot of faith in, um, the Semir Company and their, uh, interest in developing Smith Falls. And we have lots of examples of how they've done good work. And so I look forward to his proposal as soon as possible. Thank you. Okay. So we'll move along to, uh, Manager Greinke, Bellamy Farm Phase Two.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, uh, first report I'm bringing forward to committee this evening relates to the lifting of part lock control for, uh, three blocks of Phase Two of the Bellamy Farm subdivision. So, uh, similar to, uh, a number of other applications we've seen on, of this nature over the last number of months, uh. The, the blocks, the blocks that were approved as part of the, the subdivision plan continue to be built out and the part lock control. Exercise, the lifting of the part lock control is the tool under the Planning Act that allows us to divide these blocks into the freehold units along the individual, uh, property lines. So in this case, uh, these plans have been reviewed by, uh. By, by zoning and public work staff to confirm, uh, compliance with the subdivision approval and, uh. Their approval would result in the division of these blocks into thirteen freehold lots that, uh, that could be sold upon, upon, uh. Completion and registration of the, of the part lock control, of the lifting, the part lock control bylaw. So I'll, I'll leave it there, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any questions for Manager Greinke? See a thumbs up for this? Thank you. And I know we have friends from Parkview, uh, with us tonight. Should we have questions? In some of these reports and we thank you for your good work in Smith Falls. Okay, um, moving on, your next report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This, uh, this report is submitted on behalf of our chief building official and it is the annual, uh. Annual report for, for building services. So this, uh, this report fulfills our obligations under section seven subsection four of the Building Code Act. And it advises council of the activities of the building division over the, uh, over the past year, as well as the, uh, the status of the building stabilization reserve. So as council is aware, the building operations are tax revenue neutral with operational costs covered by a building permit fees. In two zero twenty-three, as in some many other years, the permit fees based on a couple of large applications. That collected exceeded that of the, uh. Of, of the operational, uh, of the operate, the direct and indirect costs. And therefore, according to the, the Building Code Act, these have been, uh. About a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars was, uh, was transferred into the, the building permit stabilization reserve fund. So it's important to have that reserve fund in the event of a rainy day. If there are years where there is very little building permit activity, this, uh, this covers. This covers that. So we don't have to reach into, uh, to tax revenue. So the building services has been very diligent in, in making sure that that's, uh. That is, uh, in order. So the second part of the report outlines the building activity broken down by building permit over the, over the last year. You'll see that, uh, you'll see from that report that in two zero twenty-three, there's a slightly. Lower number of permits issued last year compared to the year previous, however, higher than, uh, than the five-year average as, as a whole. And it's a couple of large projects, certainly in, in the institutional end that have formed a significant portion of the building permit, uh, revenue last year. So again, the number of dwelling units last year was, uh, lower than the absolute bumper crop we had in, uh, in two zero twenty-two. However, certainly, uh, is a, is a higher number than that has been traditionally, uh. Than we've traditionally seen over the last five, ten, uh, five or ten years beyond. So this report is presented for council's information and in accordance with the legislation will be posted on, uh, on the website if it hasn't already. Thank you, Madam Chair.
The Counselor McGuire has a question.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Um, I'm looking at the, the reserve fund increasing again by about another ten percent. And I'm wondering, do we have a plan for that two-point-two million or is it time that we look at lowering our building, our building permit fees?
C A O Morris, Manager Greinke, who's up?
Well, let's, uh, let's have Carol take a crack at that.
Best of luck, Carol.
Well, that's a fair, fair question, Counselor. Certainly, uh, that is an option that municipalities can follow. It, uh. We want to make sure that our, our fees are, are competitive. The, the fees as a whole, I understand, are broadly competitive across, uh. Across our municipal neighbors. Our, uh, our, our C B O is working on updating the building bylaw this year. And, uh, he's hopeful to bring forward a, an updated bylaw that sort of assesses all of our operation administrative processes for, uh, for the building process. And he's hoping to bring that forward in, in June and, and certainly that's an opportunity that gives council an opportunity to assess, uh. Where we are with fees and, and whether that needs to adjust.
Thank you. Counselor McKenna?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Similar question. I wasn't sure if it was for you or the treasurer, but, uh. Uh, with that reserve, uh, it has to fund the three years of, if, if we. but with that reserve, it has to fund the three years of, if we had no income coming in, or building permit fees coming in. So what, how do you calculate that? Is it based on our boom years when your office is fully staffed up? Or is it running the office in lean years when you might have had to lay off, I don't know, somebody? So I just wanted to know. And what is the actual annual cost of running? So similar to Counselor McGuire, I just wondered, when do we hit that three-year cap? And what is that?
So the-
And I can come back, I can get that in the future, too. I don't, didn't expect to get it tonight, but.
So I can answer as best I can. The second, or the second part of the question, Counselor, is far as direct cost to administer and enforce. And that's what's covered under the, the building department, building division, the, the staff and, and costs that, that's part of the budget. The indirect costs and for support and overhead, that typically includes the, a portion of employees in various departments. So planning, public works, Cao, administrative, treasurer, each, there's a variety. I would say most departments within the organization have some role in providing support to the operations of, of building staff in terms of advisory, comment, administrative support. Certainly, there's that element of, of overhead. So one of the, the things that the CBO Willows had done is he worked with finance staff, Director Dauber, and, and also our payroll clerk, just to get an estimate as to the overall amount of time and, and effort that each, each department, each other sort of support indirect costs would have contributed to those, those operations. And I'll, I'll let Director Dauber, if he has a, a little bit more granular information on how that, how that's calculated, I'd welcome his expertise on that.
Thank you, Counsel and Madam Chair. Normally, the calculations would be based on, on your three years. And, and, you know, as you said, if you had no income coming in, so you would pretty much take a look at whether your high expense years. And in order to, to be conservative and make sure that you're, you're budgeting correctly, then you would, you would take that, that larger portion and, and use that as part of your calculation for the three years. There has been a number of different changes and municipalities handle things slightly different as to exactly how that money is, is kept and where that cap is. But at this point, I think it would be premature for me to say this is, this is how we do it at Smith Falls. I haven't been here long enough to kind of grasp a handle on it. But, but I would say that we would, we would take a look at those, those higher years or the, the years that had a greater amount of activity. So therefore, the expenses are higher. And that would be the basis for what our three years of calculation are. But we can certainly work together and bring back a report for council and, and work with the, the Cao as well.
Thank you. On a follow-up question?
Yeah, no, that, that's great. And I understand that. And if there's a bylaw coming from the chief building officer in the future, I could wait till then. That's, I don't expect a special report on that question.
Okay. We could certainly maybe bring that as one of the council updates or, or something along that line if, if council wishes.
Thank you. Mayor Panko?
Yeah, thank you. Relates similar, to similar comments regarding the reserve. But first, just want to mention, while construction was down a bit last year than previous year, still 83 homes is still pretty significant. And if you take the construction over the last five years, it totals 745 new residential units. And I believe it was 750 that was forecasted in our 20-year official plan from 2015 to 2035. So obviously, we're well, well ahead of that. And in five years, we, we had enough growth to really cover the, the forecasted for the next, next 10 years at least. So very encouraging to see, I guess, one, developers and also people choosing Smith Falls to, to purchase their homes and be part of our community. But the, so the building reserve, it's currently sitting about a million and a half above where our target really needs to be for what needs to be preserved there based on our treasurer's comments. And I'm wondering if it makes, I don't know what this is, how consistent this is across the province, and if there are other municipalities with large reserves as well. Because like our cemetery reserve, I mean, if, if things continue on in reasonably good fashion, odds are this continues to grow, and we have money sitting there that we cannot even really utilize. And in a province where there's a, a drive to build more homes faster, to try and help accelerate construction, perhaps enhance affordability, I'm wondering if this is something we should be maybe talking to the province about, maybe at the calandra at the AML conference, about the ability to access this reserve once we're over our cap for other purposes, primarily say housing. So it doesn't make sense to leave it sitting there with no purpose, other than really, really, a number of really, really bad years for a long period of time.
Thank you. Cao Morris?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So that, that's a really great comment. And my answer is going to be very high level, to the extent that the building reserve is a dedicated reserve. So there are certain restrictions on how you can spend it. So I think the starting point would be for us to understand what those restrictions are. But, but we did reveal a number of years ago that there is an opportunity to borrow from ourselves. And that would be a pot of money that would be a suitable source, I think, of lending for, for other projects, whether they be housing-based or not. But I think if, if you leave that with staff, we can have a look at the latitude we have within the legislation around that reserve. And when we come back with the building report, we could have a discussion about that.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. We look forward to that report. It'll be lots of it.
It's getting bigger.
It is indeed. Thank you very much, Manager Greinke. Okay, moving on, Director McMunn, the Confederation Bridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, so the report I have in front of you this evening is respect to the Confederation Bridge project. So I'm seeking direction from council this evening in terms of, you know, are we going to stay the course and construct a steel bolstering bridge with a concrete deck painted black, as was previously endorsed by council? Or do we want to switch gears and look at an alternative to that particular structure? So on January 4th, 2024, the working group comprised of Mayor Panko and Counselor Quinn and Counselor McGuire met with Remin from TSI Inc., they're the consultant that's on the, or on the Confederation Bridge project to complete the detailed design for that structure. I was, I was present, as was Cao Morris. In that particular meeting, Remin from TSI, he presented a bunch of different options, primarily, primarily wooden structures. There were some other steel structures. But what he was hearing from, you know, chiming in and, and watching the, the streams that are put out there on social media from the meetings, he hasn't been here for all the meetings, but he's been watching closely from home. He was hearing that council didn't seem to be super excited about the prospect of putting in a steel bolstering bridge with concrete deck painted black. So he took it upon himself at that meeting to come back with some, some different options. And at that meeting, the, the working group were intrigued by the, the prospect of putting in a timber bridge. So fast forward a couple of weeks later to January 15th, I brought a report to council with a number of different options for consideration. Not that I was looking for a decision that evening, but just to plant the seed and get council thinking about a different narrative with respect to this particular bridge, i.e. changing to a, to a timber bridge. So out of that meeting, there were a number of different things that council wanted us to go back and look at. One being, is a timber bridge feasible? Is it constructible here in Ontario with our application crossing the canal? What would that architectural design look like? And did it have any budget and/or scheduling implications? So with that, we, we went to work, myself and, and TSI, primarily TSI, they're our consultant working on this. I helped where I could. But they reached out to a number of different large-scale contractors. I won't name who they are, but, but big contractors in the province of Ontario and across Canada, as well as different architectural firms that, 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 that work on timber bridges from around the world. And, and, you know, they have very long, lengthy resumes for structures of this kind. The one, the one, the one architectural firm that they reached out to were Structurecraft out of, out of B.C. Structurecraft coincidentally were the, the fabricators and the installers for the Bridge of Dreams. If you recall, I presented that in my last report on the 15th of January. So that was that timber structure that crosses the river out in Princeton, B.C. It was kind of that double arch look with the steel, the green steel roof. So Structurecraft, like I say, they, they, Princeton B.C. commissioned them to construct that bridge, to install the bridge. And that was back in 2010. And that bridge is, is still in service, as one would expect. And so interesting to note that they presented a, a design-build option for Princeton, B.C. I'm not sure whether or not they went out to public tender for that process. I presume they did. And anyways, they, they ended up going with Structurecraft. And it's a beautiful, in my opinion, a beautiful structure that they have out there that serves a community well. It draws a lot of interest from visitors that go and visit that particular area. And it's, and it's well-used. So some of the, some of the other contractors and/or architectural firms that, that TSI reached out to did confirm all those other things, the constructibility, feasibility. Yes, this can be constructed in Ontario. There's resources to do so. Whether or not the wood itself is, is sourced from Ontario, Quebec, and/or from B.C., certainly achievable. There's contractors in the business that could do this type of work. The one difference is that Structurecraft out of B.C., they did provide us with an unsolicited proposal. We didn't ask for it. They just felt, based on their conversations with TSI, that council had some interest in getting this bridge in sooner than later, and certainly within this term of council. But I wouldn't say time is of the essence. But if we're looking at getting something installed in 2024, then in their, in their opinion, time is of the essence. The clock's ticking and months are slipping away on us. So they presented that, that unsolicited proposal for consideration. You will know in the report, I didn't identify what their price was. I reached out to them to see if that could be disclosed in open session, and they would prefer it not to be. So I'm certainly respectful of that. They felt that if we were to disclose that number, that it could perhaps compromise their position should we go to a public procurement process, which is fair. That said, all of the, all of the contractors did say that for a timber bridge, excuse me, versus a steel bridge, we'd be looking at anywhere between like a 30 to 40% premium on top of what we're already looking at budgeting. So for this particular structure, the steel bridge, we were looking at budgeting around 1.37 million was the original budget. We have about 1.25 left in the, left in that account. Taking, taking into account that budget number is a couple of years old now. Lord knows, we've went through lots of, lots of turmoil with COVID and whatnot, and we've seen the inflationary pressures from that. So it's a little bit unknown if we were to go to tender today, whether or not we could secure and construct and install a bridge for 1.367 million. That has yet to be seen. So we have a couple of different options that I would suggest here for this evening. One, of course, would be status quo. We've, we've got a bridge that was endorsed by council. Staff and TSI are certainly willing to proceed under that notion that we're going to install that bridge and continue with the detailed design. And, and, you know, Forge Ahead does see this bridge installed in 2024. Or we can engage Structurecraft to formalize a sole source arrangement to advance the project to detailed design. And I should note that they would be responsible for, in their proposal, they noted they would be responsible for full design. They have a full suite of designers, architects, electricians, electrical engineers on staff. They could provide us with a turnkey solution for this bridge. Absent, of course, the civil work that's associated with the structure being work on approaches, landscaping, commemorative features, and lighting. That would be all outside of their scope. So basically, they would come in, install the abutments, fabricate, transport the bridge from across the country from B.C., and install it here in, in Smith Falls. And they're, they're done with it at that point. And then we would be responsible for the extension of the water main hanging from underneath the bridge and all those other things I talked about before. So there is that option, that being the sole source option. I should note that Structure, Structurecraft has advised that if approval is expeditious, and I don't feel as though they're trying to strong-arm us here. I think they're presenting an opportunity for the town based on the fact we're sitting at March, and if we're interested in getting it in 2024, that in order for them to proceed with detailed design, they would need an answer sooner than later. But they have said that if an approval is expeditious, they could, they could see the bridge being installed in 2024. But they would have to get to work. Option three would be to direct TSI, they're our consultant on the project, to advance a timber bridge designed to the, to a, sorry, a request for proposal stage. And I would suggest at that point, that would probably mean, considering Structurecraft has presented us with a design-build opportunity, opportunity, that we would probably go along that same route in the proposal that look for proponents to provide us a design-build option. So three options: status quo, sole source to Structurecraft, or go out to market for a design-build opportunity. That's all I have. I'm open to taking some questions.
Thank you. We're starting a lineup for questions here. But I just wanted to start by saying thank you. I know that for all of us around the horseshoe, we want to do this project right. And so taking the time to get the extra information is important to us. So thanks for that. Okay, Counselor McGuire?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Thanks, Director McMunn. My support is for option three, to do a request for proposal for design build. I think there's a good reason why we've got a procurement policy in the town, and it's to get the best value and quality of work done for our residents. And I don't have a great reason to not follow that policy based on what we've got tonight. From our meetings with the, with the engineering consultant, there's the Structurecraft option. And there's two world-class architectural firms that are interested in this project. All three of those parties could do it in the estimated cost or same ballpark of cost. And there's significant civil works that go into the Structurecraft proposal, mainly the, the water mains underneath the bridge, that I think will change the design enough that I don't know, I don't know how the, the price is going to withstand that. I think the best way to do this, even though we might lose a year, it's still going to have construction in 2025, is to give all of the conditions we want, and then say to the firms that want to bid on it, you know, what's your best work? What's your best price? Because the other thing, too, is the lighting proposed by Structurecraft in this report is not what council has, has been looking for previously. So there'd be a shift in what we're looking for. And I really hope that the solution to that isn't to put Christmas lights on the bridge the way we've been doing in other spots. So to meet the options, design, build, and follow our procurement policy, and let's see what the architects are going to do.
Thank you. Counselor Robinson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to be supporting option one in Black Steel Bowstring Bridge, which we already decided on once. And with the concrete deck, I seriously doubt that the maintenance costs for that kind of structure would even be close to what the maintenance structure for, or maintenance costs would be for wooden structure over its lifespan. So I'll be supporting option one.
Thank you. Mayor Panko?
I, I will be supporting option three. I happened to see, had a chance to see a bridge identical to option one a couple of weeks ago at AT&amp;T Stadium in Dallas. And it's simply a river crossing. There's nothing, it was more about getting one side of the water than the other. And there's nothing, the barriers prevent even really enjoying that experience. I think in this situation, we have a true opportunity to create new heritage in our town. And respecting the reality that if properly maintained, the investment we are making now will likely last for 100 years versus probably half of that maybe at best for a, for a steel bridge, recognize the lifespan of the wooden bridge being much longer if it's properly maintained. So, and I, I, I think Structurecraft probably has great capability of doing this. But having a bridge delivered in, in November this year or perhaps next spring, I would rather go through the proper procurement process next spring.
Thank you.
So after three.
Thank you. Counselor Quinn?
Thank you. I personally like option two.
I personally like option two, because this bridge has been out for so long, let's get at it, let it, get it built, and I've been very impressed with what we have been shown by this company, TSI, they've just, they've just taken those steps to really make me feel very comfortable. I know that's moving away from what we usually do, but it is time, and the other thing is, I just felt that this bridge, that the Bridge of Dreams that they're presenting to us, that this company wants to be in Ontario because maybe they want to use this bridge as a showcase, they want to move this way, they want to show municipalities what they can really do, and, and I think it could be a great draw for us here in the town of Smiths Falls. I know it's totally different from what was there, but so is Beckwood Street, we're living with that, so let's have something that's going to complement the whole picture, and, and so my option, preference is option two.
Thank you, Councilor Brennan.
Thank you, I'm option one all the way. I can't believe that we're willing to spend 30% to 40% more on, on a river crossing that has been out of commission for seven years, and I really, I'm wondering why, and I heard the mayor's comments, I, I appreciate them, but the bridge that is out of commission was 100 years old, so a steel bridge with a concrete pad, surely to God, will last longer than a wooden bridge, where you have to spend, you know, 80 grand or whatever every couple of years to maintain, so I'm option one, just on a cost perspective, I thought it looked good. You know, people need to get over to that park, and that's, that's the whole idea of it, and, and quite frankly, as everyone knows, I would have liked to see cars go across there too, but I'm option one.
Thank you, Councilor McKenna.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I just had a couple of questions on option one, because you mentioned that the Structure Craft didn't include lights, abutments, pipes underneath the bridge, et cetera. Option one has all of that, or is that on top of the bridge as well? Is that, I didn't go back and read the January 11th one.
No, that's fine, through the, through the chair, so option one, the original budget wouldn't have incorporated the, the replacement of the water main, which is now downstream of the current bridge. We have some concerns with that water crossing, just, you know, we're just trying to mitigate any risk of that water main breaking. That water main that does cross the river, it only services the Lockhouse and Parks Canada offices and the, and the museum, but nonetheless, it's, it's a serviced pipe that services two facilities. So no, it doesn't, so we would still be...
Either option has those extra...
Either option would have extra costs associated with the water main and lighting, and the commemorative features, whatever that ends up being.
The abutments.
No, the abutments are included in, in all scenarios.
Entrance landscaping.
Approaches, no.
And option one, is that also going out to tender, though, isn't it?
Option one, if it's status quo, we will continue, if status quo is a decision of council here this evening, we will continue with the detailed design, and with the intention of, hopefully, we're not too long in the tooth here that we can't get this bridge installed by the end of this fall.
But there's a tender process involved.
There is a tender process, 100%, yes.
It's implied that only option three had tender processes, but option one, that's a tender process as well.
Correct, through the chair, option one always had, always had a tendering process with it, yep.
Are you still thinking about your options?
I am, for a minute.
All right, we'll come back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I know Councilors Quinn and McGuire have follow-up questions, I'm just going to take a chance to ask a couple of questions for my turn, if you don't mind. So just building on what Councilor McKenna said, with the Black Steel Bridge, have we ruled out the possibility for lighting, a lookout spot, flower holders, those things we really wanted, but I don't know that can be accommodated in that design?
Right, the, the lookout would be a challenge with the bowstring bridge. Not that it couldn't be incorporated, but the information I got from Algonquin Bridge some time ago was that, I mean, anything can be done with, with, with money, right? So I don't know what that amount is, but the, the way it was suggested to me, it would be quite costly to incorporate that into a bowstring bridge, be very, very challenging from a design perspective. The, the lighting is something that can be, in my opinion, easily incorporated regardless of what structure we put in, but again, they'll have to, you know, TSI will have to look at it, they'll have to engage an architect or a lighting engineer to come and, and put that package together for council's consideration. Obviously, we're going to bring that design back to council at probably the 50-ish percent stage for consideration, and we'll bring it back to the working group as well for consideration, they're kind of the voice of, of council, and should have a good feeling in terms of what collectively what council want. So it's not the case of we're just going to go to tender, here's what you're getting, we'll, we'll have a consultation process with council through the...
Excellent, I'll throw my other questions in before turning it back. The quote from Structure Craft, was that with or without the roof?
With.
With the roof, and did we get any formal written advice from the Heritage Committee? I know you were, been talking to them.
Yeah, thank you, so we have been in consultation with the MHC, we, coincidentally, we have a meeting with them, I believe, this week?
Thursday.
Thursday of this week, to go out onto site, hopefully, everybody can attend, but go out on site, and we can still walk out on the, the wooden cantilevered sidewalk, and get an idea from the MHC group in terms of what elements are salvageable and what are, Remen from TSI is going to be there as well, so he'll be able to inform if that particular piece of steel is too far gone, we, we wouldn't be able to use it, so he'll be able to add some context to that. So yeah, we ha, I have met with them a couple of times, and trying to, trying to get some focus around the commemorative features for the bridge that's still in place, you know, how do we commemorate it? Is it, you know, storyboard plaques at either end of the approach, or is it salvaging some of the steel elements of the bridge and incorporating that into some type of structure that can commemorate the bridge? That's up in the air yet, but first and foremost, we want to get them out to the structure, what do you want to salvage? Once the bridge is gone, it's gone, so we don't want to miss that opportunity.
Thank you very much, okay, we're going to go around again, Councilor McGuire.
Thanks, Madam Chair, and yeah, just to, to comment on the heritage a little more, I think the ultimately, as much as the Heritage Committee, you know, mourns the loss of the existing structure that's been in our community for 100 years, I think that the only way to really create a new heritage asset there is to have something that's been designed by an architect and creates a focal point in the basin. But why I put up my hand was there, I know there's been some concerns about the cost of maintenance and the cost of the lifespan of the bridge, and that was a big concern for me too, and I've done a lot of research on it and a lot of consultation with Remen, and I know he's done a ton of research on it, and he confirms what is easily available online, that I haven't been able to find anything to go against, and that's that this structure will last in perpetuity as long as we keep maintaining it, and the regular maintenance on this, on a timber structure will be proportionately less than a steel structure. There's also a lower carbon footprint of the timber structure than a steel structure, so those concerns, if somebody's got an idea or something they've seen online or an academic paper that we need to review that, that puts that out here, let's discuss it, but all of the information right now shows that this is a superior way to build it. So, so that for me is why option one's ruled out. Option two or option three, it just seems like the right way to do it is to follow our due process and, and follow our procurement policy, so.
Thank you, Councilor Quinn, last comment?
Thank you. If we go with the wooden structure, are there possible grants out there? Because this is something new and something that they want to start to promote, so are there possible grants that we could tap into?
Yeah, thank you, there, there are some grants, there's one that we're investigating right now, we're putting a bit of a expression of interest together for, it's through Natural Resources Canada, it's the wood, something or other, the name's a skating right at the moment, but yeah, so they have intakes kind of all the time, they don't have a, a period in time where, you know, you have from this state to this state to, to, to make a submission. So we're going to, we're going to put some feelers out with them and, and expression of interest to see whether or not they would support a project like this. The issue with that particular fund is it doesn't identify, you know, the maximum contribution that, that Natural Resources Canada will, will fund a project, so that's a little bit of an unknown. We have also got our finger on the pulse with respect to the active transportation fund out there as well. Unfortunately, we missed the first intake some time ago, and it's unknown at this time whether or not there's going to be another intake, but perhaps with the provincial funding having, or provincial budget being passed the other day, there could be something coming out from the province momentarily too, so, but anyways, we've, we've got our, we've got our eye on any potential funding that could come down the pipe for, for this project.
Just, can I just do a follow-up? And if you had have asked me a while ago, would I look at a wooden bridge, I'd have likely said, hmm, not likely, but I keep, I keep looking at this and I keep like researching some of it, and you know what? We have log buildings that have been standing for well over 100 years, so if they're maintained, it doesn't mean that they're going to crumble, they're just like anything else. If you have a steel bridge, how long do you have with them? They have to be maintained, it doesn't matter what it is, but a wooden bridge, maintained properly, can stand for years, like I'm saying, log homes have been standing for years.
I will note, not that I'm trying to influence any decision here this evening, but Structure Craft did advise that the wood that would be sourced for this project would be from B.C., it would be Douglas fir, so if that, if that means anything.
Councilor McKenna?
So it was the, for me, it came down to the cost, I, I could live with the wood bridge, I could live with the steel, but it's, it's probably a half million dollars more for the wood bridge, 30 to, in my head, a good calculation, and $400,000, $500,000 more, and I keep looking at about water tower, and the millions that it's cost, going to cost us, and I, I just have to go with the option one and go out to tender at the best, best price we can on that bridge.
Thank you, last question, Mr. McGuire?
Thanks, Councilor, my question, what's the lifespan on the option one?
Option one, you'd be looking at 50 to 75 years, somewhere in that range?
So after 50 to 75 years, then we've got another X million dollars to replace it, where the timber one can be maintained as long as the regular maintenance is done?
The timber bridge, they're, they're suggesting is 75 plus years with, with regular maintenance.
And then rehabilitation?
Well, they didn't touch on rehabilitation, but I presume like any bridge can be rehabilitated if you get it at the right time, so what I will note is this particular structure would be subject to our OSIM inspection, so that's a biennial inspection that we do with all our, all our bridges in town, so we'd have an engineer get eyes on it every two years, and they would document any deficiencies, and they put together a maintenance plan for anything over and above, you know, just a treatment of the wood with a preservative, right?
Thank you.
A treatment to, you know, against UV and that kind of stuff.
Thanks very much, and, and I went into this conversation thinking I wanted option one because it was less expensive and faster, I'm keeping in mind our old home week in 2025, and I'd love to have this in place, but the conversations around heritage and building new heritage and the sustainability of the wood has really turned me to option three. I also believe strongly in our bidding process, and so I think that's important to me, which leads us to a tie, although, Councilor Quinn, if you are a fan of the wood bridge, would you be willing to go with option three? Which gives you your direction.
Option three.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, Mayor Panko, basic income.
Yes, thank you. We, committee and I guess the public has the draft resolution in, in front of them, and this all emerged, started in December 14th, Rob Rayner, who is Chair of the Lannard Basic Income Network, came as a delegation to Smiths Falls For All Committee, and the committee was very intrigued by their presentation, the discussion on basic income, the merits and benefits of what this would mean for both our population and our country, frankly. And so we asked Mr. Rayner to come back and dra, to draft a resolution for our consideration that we would then consider, it was approved by the Smiths Falls For All Committee at our last meeting, and, and then advanced, of course, to a committee for, for consideration tonight. So our, just want to remind committee that our 2023, 2026 strategic plan contains the following vision statement, helping marginalized people move out of poverty, and it really commits us to all do our part. And we know the impact of poverty on our community is deep and broad, and the consequences of poverty on those impact, it goes far beyond their quality of life, it extends through every element of their life, has deeply negative effects on both physical and mental health, it leaves a legacy of hopelessness and lost opportunity, that commonly extends for generations. The cost of poverty is estimated to be at least $80 million annually in Canada, the estimated cost of basic income is $80 billion annually in Canada, so basically a trade-off. Poverty leads to fewer early childhood and post-secondary education opportunities, poorer mental and physical health, increased social isolation, isolation and stress, greater susceptibility to chronic health problems, shorter life expectancies, healthcare costs that are more than double that of food security adults. And really, the reactionary results of poverty affect our emergency room, our entire healthcare system, our paramedic service, our police, and with a high probability of children raised in poverty destined to a lifetime poverty, our community's high levels of people living in poverty will not change with a significant change at the federal provincial levels. And furthermore, I think until we are willing to confront the stark reality that a great number of our citizens and our children are living in deep and difficult poverty, and until we commit to effective and sustained advocacy for these citizens, we are ignoring the needs of one in every six people in our community. I think we, many people will acknowledge that the social welfare system in Ontario and across our country is horribly inadequate, and systemic change does not happen, the negative consequences of poverty will get far worse, and the impact on every element of society will be far more profound and visibly evident. So was, well, this is a national issue, I want to for a moment discuss realities of poverty in our community. As the resolution before states, according to our recent census, 16.4% of our citizens are living below the low-income measure, provincially, the number is 5.3%. With the prevalence of deep poverty, Smiths Falls, 300% of the provincial average, I think we need to do more, 785 or 200, or 23% of our households had an income of less than $30,000 annually, another 905 households had a median income of between 30,000 and 50,000, household income, sorry, between 30,000 and 50,000. So that combined, that means four in 10 of our families are trying to make ends meet on total household income of less than 50,000 annually, and of course, with the rising cost of housing in recent years, and the average rent's now commonly above $2,000 a month, how does a family living off of 2,500 or even 3,000 or 4,000 a month manage? So as we discussed late last year when planning delegations for Roma, Roma Conference in January, over 1,000 citizens and additional 400 dependents rely on the Ontario Disability Support Program as a primary source of income, if they're lucky enough to be housed, their basic ODSB and shelter allowance total 1,003 a week a month, and if they're not housed, it's about 800 bucks a month. And understanding the province has, through an exhaustive and generally lengthy and difficult process, determined that every ODSB recipient is disabled, unable to work full-time, the probability of brighter days ahead for these citizens is virtually non-existent. So numerous municipalities have recently passed resolutions supporting the need for basic income in Canada, including the city of Kingston earlier this month, I know Napanee, Belleville, and the trend is rolling across the province and the country. Well, tonight, when we, when we face the question of would we provide our support to this resolution and ask the country, the, the federal government, to design a program for basic income, I guess, think of our, I guess, one in six citizens in our town who really struggle, and, and ultimately, the overall benefit and health, health and wellness of our community improves as the quality of living, the standard of living, and the income for citizens grows, and I think basic income, it's a time for basic income, the time that we, we consider the possibility of what this would mean for our community, and economically, imagine what it would do for, not just for people of our town, but for the overall broader economy of our community. So at that, I'm, I'm available for questions, or?
Thank you.
Chair back to the chair.
Thank you, Councilor McKenna?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I think the mayor has spoken quite eloquently on this. I've been over to the Basic Income Lannard Network meetings, I've heard people who have had a taste of what that life could be like, and the impact it's had on... I've heard people who have, uh, had a taste of what that life could be like and the impact it's had on, on their lives. Um, and, uh, many more intelligent people than myself have studied this for decades and decades and, and I think the time has come, I agree with the mayor. We would not be the first municipality at all to, uh, support a resolution like this. Um, and I'm very much in favor, uh, of, uh, the federal provincial governments collaborating on the design, introduction, implementation, ongoing evaluation of a basic income program, not just for our citizens, but for the citizens of the country. So I'm very much in favor of this.
Thank you. Counselor Robinson?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, as well, know poverty has become an epidemic, not only in our community, but across the country and the world. Uh, while guaranteed income may not be without challenges, it does offer a promising approach to addressing poverty and inequality. Promoting economic security and empowering individuals and families to lead more fulfilling lives. However, while the concept may seem appealing on the surface, it can pose significant challenges that need to be considered. Implementation of this program will create additional dependency on government support. Funding a program such as this would require significant financial resources. Ninety-three billion dollars in twenty twenty-five to twenty-six, according to a National Post article, which was published in, on January twenty-second of this year. Which would more than likely require higher levels of taxation or the reallocation of funding for other essential services such as healthcare and education. This type of program might also deter individuals from seeking or pursuing education and training opportunities to improve their skills and employability. And it may not effectively address the underlying issues of inequality and social exclusion. Instead of a blanket guaranteed income, policies should focus on improving and increasing funding to existing programs. Increased access to education and healthcare, investments in job training programs and taxation, which ensures a fair distribution of wealth and opportunities. These approaches could help address poverty and inequality while also encouraging individual responsibility and economic growth. So as a result of, of this, I can't support a guaranteed income resolution. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Brennan? Yes, Counselor Brennan?
Just unmuting here. Thank you. Uh, yeah, uh, I, I agree with, uh, my fellow Counselor Robinson. And he said it, the ninety-three billion dollars, uh, that would, that would be required to, uh, to fund such a program. And I just to put that in perspective, uh, that's more than double, more than double what Ottawa puts out uh, to health transfers to the, to the provinces, more than double. So I don't, I'm not sure where that money is going to come from, but, uh, it, it'll come out of the taxpayer's pocket. I think that really, um, and it, it, to be clear, I mean, a term, uh, not last term, but the term before, this came up, uh, before and, and I guess my question is, and then I have a final comment, uh, and to, to your worship. Uh, I know this came up at county council, I think in the fall, and, uh, I think it was parked. Is that, am I correct?
No.
It didn't come up at county council?
No.
Uh, sorry?
No, it wasn't.
It didn't come up at county council? I, I thought it did.
Not at corporate community services, anyway.
Okay, uh, so I, I'd be interested, because the county delivers the social services, we pay them for it. Uh, I, I'd be interested to see what county councillors, from what I understand, uh, it was parked and, um, and so, you know, the county, I don't know that the county's on bar, on board other than, uh, you know, Reeve Rayner. But really, at, at the end of the day, I think it's time, and I totally agree that this is a huge problem, but there are, um, uh, support programs in place. So it's time for, it is not, it's the guaranteed income is not a magic bullet that's going to solve everything. I think that we have the programs in place, it's up to the provinces and the federal government to roll up their sleeves and, and better serve the people that need it. Um, but a guaranteed income is, is not on my page. I do not support it and I will not support it.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Quinn?
Thank you. As everyone listening remembers, I did not support this back when it came forward a few years ago. And I still believe that way. How much is it going to cost? Only three billion dollars. And who is going to fund this? The taxpayers. I believe there are many ways to help people, help them to develop and grow through education, apprenticeship programs, schooling, more affordable. It costs, what it costs a young person to go to school is just astronomical and then they start out with this big debt right off the bat, like to me, that is not healthy. And heaven, we know, we need doctors, nurses, teachers, electricians, plumbers, auto mechanics, clerical staff, daycare workers, artists, carpenters, many, many, many more. These people, some of these people definitely need mental health help. I deal with one particular gentleman at the moment, very nice man. Struggling, struggling, and he cannot get mental health help. It's not there. So let's look at that as a, as a starting point. Had an organization here in town, it was called Skills and Initiatives, where people could stop in, make themselves a cup of coffee, use computers, help with resumes that needed to be drawn up, help with medical issues, guiding them as to where they could go to get help. And they could also get some small jobs. And that got them into the community and, and making them feel good about themselves. One of the things this town needs is a bus service. With all these people that do not have vehicles, a bus service would be grand. Community gardens, growing some of their own fruits and vegetables. Teaching people how to cook and how to freeze food, how, how to have it for longer than just a very short period of time. Our parks need to be upgraded for more enjoyable use by everybody. And, and that's a place that we could be looking at. Don't put them in a situation where they can't grow and prosper. Allow them to develop their talents and be proud of what they have accomplished. Idle hands cause negative actions. You do not solve problems by putting money at it. I do believe there are, are many problems here that need to be dealt with. And yes, it is going to take some money, but let's make sure that it goes out to everyone.
Thank you. Mayor Panko, do you want to jump in before we?
Yeah, and I, I guess I'm, I would say I'm, um, I'm a little disappointed with some of the comments and I respect everyone's entitled to their comments. But we are talking about one in six citizens, citizens in our community who live in deep poverty. And without system change, that, that will continue for generations. It'll be, it'll, in perpetuity, we'll never see these things change. And it's hard to, for people living in poverty, and I don't, I'm, I'm hoping I'm sounding a certain way here, but I mean, because I haven't faced that myself, but I've talked to a lot of people. And the reality is, if you're worried about how are you going to eat, how are you going to pay for your rent, how are you going to survive? Um, you're not thinking about getting an education or you're not thinking about how you're going to start a business because your brain physically cannot allow you, enable you to do that. Uh, so the chance for hope, if there's no hope, hope doesn't present itself without some degree of change. And as I mentioned earlier, the cost of poverty in Canada is at least eighty billion dollars annually. So poverty is eighty billion and the solution is ninety-three billion. We're not, there's not a huge difference there to change the outcomes for millions of people in our community. So what if, and the infographic from, from the, the Lannard Basic Income Network speaks a lot, uh, smartly about it. What if you're in a violent domestic situation, need to start over? You had a stroke, could no longer work. Uh, your spouse had traumatic brain injury from a head-on collision, you needed round-the-clock care. The child is diagnosed with a life-limiting illness, you need to take immediate treatment. Or if you lost your job due to downsides and rotamation. Um, and, and the basic income pilot that was conducted in, in Ontario from two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, um, had some great outcomes. Twenty-six percent of participants started education or training programs so they could get a hand up and get a better start for their lives. Forty-eight percent volunteered more. Thirty-eight percent of employed participants, employed participants found higher-paying jobs. And any decrease in employment is largely by those who returned to school or stayed home to look after family members. And studies also indicated that seventeen, seventeen percent of participants quit smoking, forty percent smoked less, five percent quit, quit drinking, forty-three per, forty-three percent drank less, and eighty-five percent ate more nutritious food. And I just want for a moment to speak to, uh, I happened to run into an individual on Saturday, we were in Toronto. And this gentleman reminded me of how difficult life can be when you come out of difficult situations. And he suffered horrible abuses as a child. He went through four years of the most traumatic experiences you can probably ever imagine, from the age of seven to the age of eleven. By the age of thirteen, he's drinking. By the age of fifteen, he's using drugs. Uh, eventually he gets married, his wife dies of addiction. Um, he ends up eventually starting to work, then he falls off a ladder, hurts his back. Uh, he falls back into addiction. Uh, the reason, we, we connected, he, he said he knew about Smith Falls because he lived in Brockville for a while and he, and he went there to Brock Cottage for treatment. He beat his addiction. He made a friend from Smith Falls who was there at the same time, who also beat their addiction. That individual is, is now successful in our community. Uh, but this gentleman has been homeless in streets of Toronto for twelve years. And he gets eight hundred, eight hundred bucks a month O D S B because he hasn't got a shelter allowance, because he doesn't have a shelter to pay for. And he basically does anything he can to survive. The, the hospitals do nothing for him, the mental health workers do nothing for him. He basically just tries to survive. And if he had not been through the traumatic experiences as a child that he went through, and I won't get into it because it's, there's no need to get into it, um, life could be normal today and maybe he would not be, uh, suffering from mental health, maybe never would suffer from addictions. And if anyone attended the homelessness session put on by Lannard County last week, um, you would have heard. And, and if you haven't, it's on again April second, I believe. Anyway, ninety percent of people who are homeless are suffering from major childhood trauma. So it's not easy to overcome these things. And so if you, or if you're dealing with those types of things in your life, uh, and you also are deep poverty, your chance of exiting by yourself is, it's virtually non-existent. But if we build a foundation of support, then get some confidence, get some hope, believe there's a better future, they can get a better, better education. Maybe their kids are going to be able to, uh, get an education and move on to something better in the future. So I think it's, I, I respect everyone's opinions, but I think we're talking about one in six citizens in our community, through all citizens of our community, and I think we need to do more for them.
And we have two more opinions to hear.
Okay.
So, uh, Counselor McGuire, if you could chime in?
Uh, thanks, Madam Chair. Appreciate Mayor Panko's great dive into the all, all the really good reasons for doing it. I'm not going to repeat them. Um, for me, I think, uh, former Senator Hugh Segal made a really great case in his book, Wood Straps Need Boots. Um, he was the former Chief of Staff for Premier Bill Davis, former Chief of Staff for Prime Minister Brian Mulroney. And he makes a really conservative argument of how this not only is the right thing to do for social reasons, but there's also a really compelling cost argument for it. So I, I think that, uh, you know, there's, there's arguments that can be made on both sides. There was really good data that came out of the pilot. Um, I think the pilot ending prematurely was unfortunate and, uh, the least we can do is support this motion tonight, so.
Thank you. And I'd like to close it out because this resolution will pass, um, to just speak about my day-to-day work and to try and do it without getting emotional, because I see hungry children every day in Smith Falls, two blocks from here. And so we are seeing the rising pressure on families of food costs. They can't make the rent and so the kids go without. And, um, we've petitioned the province, I was there, to increase O D S P rates. We have supported the development of new food access programs in our recent community grants. And now it's time to encourage the federal government to help out Canadians who are under this incredible pressure. So having a safety net like basic income can be just the foot up that a family right here in Smith Falls needs. So thank you, Mayor Panko. The resolution is going forward.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Manager Granky?
Good evening. My report this evening updates council on the proceedings of the Bellamy Farm subdivision and presents for council's consideration proposed changes that were requested by the developer Parkview Homes for the third and final phase of the subdivision. As council, council will recall, the Bellamy Farm subdivision has been built out in phases with the first phase comprising the end of Ferrera and bottom of Staples Boulevard, which received final approval at the end of twenty eighteen. In twenty twenty-one, council gave draft approval for the, for the remainder of the Bellamy Farms' lands, which would in turn be developed in two, uh, two further phases. Phase two, which comprises the extension of Staples Boulevard to Broadview, as well as Margaret Graham Terrace and Whitcomb Crescent, was registered in twenty twenty-two and is now under construction. The draft approval also covered the third and final phase, which are the lands to the west of Staples Boulevard, which is what we're looking at this evening. The draft approval for phase, uh, for the phase two and three lands established a total of fifty-five conditions. It also recognized that the composition and location of the proposed singles, semis and townhouses may evolve across the entire site. However, the total unit count was limited to two hundred and fifty, which was what was assessed by the supporting studies that were, uh, were done in support of that subdivision. With phase two consisting almost entirely of townhomes with a couple of semis, the, the plan for phase three was envisioned to include a few townhouse blocks, but also some semis and singles, all of which would add up to that cumulative two hundred and fifty total. Earlier last year, Parkview Homes approached the town looking to modify the proposed concept for phase three and ultimately settled on a concept that proposed that the built form be entirely townhouses, which results in an increase in density by seventy-two over the hundred and eighty-four units that were allocated to this phase, leaving a total of a hundred and fifty-six townhouse units. The substantial increase in density would completely reject the parcel fabric, which would necessitate a major, uh, revision application that would need to be circulated to applicable review agencies. Traffic, stormwater, water and sewer studies were also needed to be up, updated to confirm that the existing and planned infrastructure could accommodate the larger number of residents upstream. The transportation and servicing studies that were submitted along with this, uh, proposal were peer-reviewed on behalf of the town and or peer-reviewed on behalf of the town by E V B Engineering. And the, uh, and ultimately were, uh, were accepted following, following some, uh, some back and forth, which is normal on that process. The road network onsite and downstream, as well as the water mains, are sufficient to accommodate increased demand. The stormwater pond that has been previously proposed at the west end of the site is sufficiently sized to accommodate increased, uh, flows arising from the higher amount of hardened surfaces. However, some components would need to be finalized through detailed design plans that would be a condition of draft approval of the subdivision. A potential sanitary pipe sizing issue has been identified off-site and staff are undertaking flow monitoring to monitor performance and clarify the intent of the issue, if any. Subject to the resolution of that, which can be a condition of draft approval, the infrastructure appears to support the increase in demand arising from the seventy-two additional units compared to what was, uh, draft approved in twenty twenty-one. Council should also consider the official plan's desire for complete communities when assessing proposals for large residential developments such as this. The policies were written at a time when the town was seeing almost exclusively single detached, uh, residential development patterns. And these policies were trying to nudge us in the direction of including denser and more affordable building, building typologies. In this case, this development, along with the previous phases of Bellamy Farm, introduced hundreds of new townhouse units into the town's housing inventory. In turn, this creates a new sort of uni, uni, of uniformity in this development type in this area. The developer has rationalized this proposal by indicating that they're responding to the substantial market demand for townhouses, which allows them to, uh, to market units at a lower price point than were these, uh, singles. An analysis of housing types from the twenty twenty-one census for Smith Falls and our, uh, peer communities in Eastern Ontario suggests there is much lower inventory of townhouses in Smith Falls compared to those of our neighbors. And the highest inventory of townhouses are in those that have been seeing, uh, rapid housing growth for a little bit longer than we have. In general, staff respect the role of the market in determining housing typology, provided that the lands can be serviced and is not introducing an incompatibility into the neighborhood. That being said, designing new communities to meet the needs of the broadest cross-section of the community in terms of affordability, accessibility and stage of life is an important objective in community planning. If council supports the draft increase in density requested by Parkview Homes, we propose the inclusion of a draft approval condition that requires the provision of a variety of different forms of townhouse dwellings, including bungalows and different designs that provide opportunities for, uh, for different price points. The developer is in agreement with this condition and advises they're working on a variety of designs that accommodate more affordable options and, and different typologies within this phase. The expectation is there will be less uniformity in design in this phase. One improvement that we as staff are, are pleased to bring forward is an enhanced green space concept for this phase, which is extremely important given that we're looking at a form of development that leaves little private outdoor space. The increase in density has allowed us to leverage improved open space amenities, which include a larger park proposed to be located in a more central part of the subdivision, as well as pathway accesses at the. as well as pathway accesses at the north and south end of the subdivision will provide access to a pathway at the western end of the subdivision in between the storm pond and the provincially significant wetland. This pathway and the linkage to the subdivision and Broadview will provide trail access to the Cataractway Trail for, uh, for more residents, as well as a, a broader amount of passive green space around the natural area. The trail would be intended to be targeted to pedestrians and cyclists who would use an existing pathbed that's been used informally for some time. RVCA has indicated an openness to this and the subdivision agreement would outline the administrative aspects of the, the connection. And I'd like to acknowledge as, through a project such as this, of course, the work of our colleagues, particularly in community services and public works, as well as RVCA. A subdivision is a tremendously multidisciplinary process and involves a lot of work by, uh, by, by a lot of, uh, by a lot of staff. So, so thank you to, to them. And also I'd like to thank the, the applicants for their work in the project. At this point, staffers are seeking council's direction on the proposed modification to the third phase of Bellamy Farm. What is currently in legal effect is the twenty twenty-one draft approval and conditions. If council supports the concept, then a revised suite of draft approval conditions would need to be adopted by resolution. For council's consideration, staff have attached draft, draft approval conditions with changes tracked from the, the twenty twenty-one draft approval. The phase two lands along the east of Staples, those lands in the subdivision is registered and, uh, and a subdivision agreement is, is in effect there. So we deleted any of the, the conditions that apply exclusively to those lands since they're no longer applicable. The proposed draft approval conditions would apply only to the phase three lands and they include additional new or modified condi- conditions for council's consideration. I'll pause there and, uh, look for council's, uh, direction on the, on the proposal.
Thank you. Uh, I've got two thumbs up, but I do have a question from Councillor McGuire.
Uh, thanks, Madam Chair. Not a question, just, uh, my comments on it. I definitely support, uh, recommendation one about the increase in density. I don't support the appendix E revisions as proposed. Two parts to it. One is I don't understand why we're taking out the active transportation component of the street extensions. And two, um, I, I don't support the additional parkland because when we look at our Parks and Rec Master Plan, we've got enough parkland, surplus parkland per person according to the metrics of that report. And we keep adding these little parks in, in new parts. And I don't think we account for the fact that the Cataractway Trail is a significant park asset. If Smith Falls, if all of our parks right now were in tip-top shape and being maintained and we could afford to add more parkland to our, our annual budget, I'd say great. But I, I just don't see how we can keep adding park space when we've got, there's lots of green space in this part of town with the Cataractway Trail. We've got lots of park space, hectare per person in town, based on the standards of the Parks and Rec Master Plan. So because we're in a housing crisis, not a parkland crisis, I think that land would be better with houses on it than green space.
Thank you. Councillor Brennan?
Hi. Yeah, I support, uh, I support this and this, this was, um, a, a very good meeting at the, uh, Councillor Robinson can report a very good meeting with the planning advisory committee. The opponents were there, answered all kinds of questions. Uh, it aligns with, uh, our, our desire for more housing. And, uh, if, if you have a look back there, um, uh, there is a great number of homes being built and, uh, they're a great distance from, from our parks and I know they can get there, but, uh, it's not a significant, uh, piece of land that is going to be parkland. So I, I fully support this, as I did at the planning advisory committee.
Councillor Quinn?
Thank you. Yes, I am also going to support this. And talking about parkland, I totally agree with Councillor Brennan. We do have a lot of parkland in the town of Smith Falls, but is it in the right place for this particular development, for all the development that's going on? If there is, is there really enough parkland in that area? And I sit on the Cataractway Trail, uh, board and, um, we need to be upgrading that. That's part of what we need to do and that's right along in that area. So that's something that the town needs to be looking to do is to enhance the, um, Cataractway Trail. And then these people could be using it also, but I certainly do support your recommendation. Thank you.
Mayor Panko?
Yeah, thank you. Um, Director Grankey, the, the wetland is, is in addition to the parkland, correct? Yeah. So there's, which is, I guess, uh, casual recreational area to some extent, I guess. But anyway, I, I support the recommendation and, um, I agree with the need for parkland. Uh, it's not, a trail is great, uh, wetlands are great, but you, you want to have the place of recreation, especially the number of kids that live in this neighborhood. And, uh, I agree, ideally we have homes with two hundred meters of parks all across our community. So, thank you.
Just closing up with one question, Mayor Grankey. Um, the, uh, cost of installing a playground, would that be on us or the developer?
At this point, uh, it would be, uh, it would be on us. However, we are working and, and the developer has, has indicated that, uh, they're, they're going to be doing a lot of site work in the next, uh, over the next number of, number of months. So they'll, through that, uh, through that site work, they'll, they'll get the site into a fairly tip-top condition, ready for that. And as far as the installation of the play structures, that would be, uh, something that would be worked on with, uh, between council, future budget, uh, budget periods. But there are some, uh, some of those aspects that we're, we're still working on with, with the developer. They'd indicated an interest and certainly wanting to see that, uh, that park developed sooner rather than later as well.
Thank you. Okay, you, uh, you got consensus to go forward with your recommendation. Thank you. We added, um, a priority item of ten point nine on committee appointments with Director Ursula Clark-Castelmo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bringing forward an application this evening, uh, for a health unit representative on the Smith Falls For All Committee. An application was received from Joanne De Sormo, uh, and it's gone through, uh, the chair as well as myself and recommendation of this appointment, uh, is being made from, uh, I think all of the Smith Falls For All Committee, uh, with council's concurrence, we'd like to add this to our next regular, uh, meeting of council, which would be April second.
Thank you very much. And, uh, thank you to Joanne for putting her name forward. Do we have any committee board external organizational updates for right now? Councillor McKenna?
Just a brief one, Madam Chair. It's the big week for, uh, the Leeds-Gremble-Lanark Public Health Board, which I sit on as your representative. On Thursday night, we'll be, uh, entertaining the notion of whether to merge with the Kingston Front, the Atlantic and Addington Public Health and the Hastings-Pretoria County Public Health. So, uh, stay tuned. An important week.
Thank you for your work on that. Okay, we have two items under correspondence. Does council wish to speak to either of them or receive them for information? Councillor McGuire? Samuel Morris?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I, I would, uh, I would encourage, uh, council to support the Chatham Kent Resolution. The reason for that is, um, the materials from commercial establishments and, and others in downtown settings are excluded and our opinion is that it matters not where the material is generated, it matters that it belongs to the producer and the producer should pay for it. So I would encourage council to support this.
Do we have, Councillor McGuire, is your saying yes to that?
Yeah.
Okay. Everyone's saying yes, we support that. Thank you. So we'll do the second piece. Councillor McGuire, did you have a question or comment on one of these?
Yeah, for the second one, just, I was looking for some direction from staff of whether we need to pass a resolution or, um, how it will affect the town of Smith Falls.
Samuel Morris?
Um, so I, I may call on Carl to help out with this, but I understand this is just a information about what's happening through the legislation. So I, I don't think there's a chance to influence the legisla- the legislation at this point.
I think, I think AMO's, either AMO or Municipal World just did an update on this in one of their bulletins I got today. I thought I, thought I saw something, just the same thing, just helping raise awareness.
Thank you. Okay. No notice of motions, so I would call for a motion to adjourn. Councillor Robinson, seconded by Councillor McGuire, all in favor? Carried. We'll take a short recess before the council.
Uh, I've got your, which ones do I have tonight? The three you told me to. I've got your building division and a report for a motion, your Bellamy Phase Three.
Yes.
Okay, welcome back everyone to Special Meeting Smith Falls Town Council for Monday, March 25th, 2024. I'm going to open the meeting with our land acknowledgement. On March 25th, 2024, we acknowledge that the sacred land in which Smith Falls is now located has been a site of human activity for over 10,000 years and its rich indigenous history. This land is the ancestral and unceded territory of the Algonquin Anishinaabe Nation. We're also grateful to the Algonquin ancestors who cared for the land and water in order that we might meet here today. We're also grateful to the Algonquin people for their contribution in the making of the Rio Canal which runs through Smith Falls. We are mindful of broken covenants and the need to reconcile with all the relations. Together, may we care for this land and each other, drawing on the strength of our mutual history of nation building through peace and friendship, being mindful of generations to come. Ask for approval to the agenda. We made a couple amendments. Councillor Miller is going to look after number three. Councillor Robinson will look after number 9.1, just with technical issues with Councillor Brennan. Ask for approval of the agenda. Moved by Councillor Miller. Oh, sorry. Yes, go ahead, Councillor Miller.
Thank you.
I refuse myself.
Moved by myself and seconded by Councillor McKenna that the March 25th, 2024 special council meeting agenda be approved as circulated.
Thank you. Moved by Councillor Miller and seconded by Councillor McKenna that the March 25th, 2024 special council meeting agenda be approved as circulated. All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Ask for disclosure of any interest or conflict of interest and general interest thereof. Seeing none, our approval of minutes is with Councillor Quinn.
Thank you, worship. Moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Miller, that the minutes of March 4th, 2024, the council meeting be approved as circulated.
Thank you. Moved by Councillor Quinn and seconded by Councillor Miller that the minutes of the March 4th, 2024 council meeting be approved as circulated. All in favor? As carried. Thank you. Reports. Councillor Miller?
Yes, thank you. I have a few reports tonight. I continue to sit on the planning committee for the Falls Food Hub with Mayor Panko as well. The Table Community Food Hub is opening a space for community meals and food programs at Giant, the Giant Tiger Mall, and they'll be starting renovations there soon. They've put out a call on their Facebook page looking for committed monthly donors to support their expansion here to Smith Falls. And there's also a fundraiser being organized for later this spring. So I just encourage everybody watching to follow them on Facebook and to engage with this good work. The Downtown Business Association held their annual general meeting in February. Councillor Quinn and I were both at that, and they reported on a very successful 2023. Retailers in our downtown continue to rebound from COVID, and the effort to shop local continues to be really important. So please be sure to shop and eat in downtown Smith Falls and support our charming shops and our incredible eateries. Library renovations are underway, and Director Clark is overseeing that project. She'll be regularly reporting to council on the progress. In the meantime, the Friends of the Library and the library itself have kicked off a fundraising campaign to help furnish the new children's department. So again, please follow them on Facebook to see how you can get involved and help. I wanted to let council know that the Arts Council is undergoing some changes to their board directors. So they're currently restructuring and bringing on some new members, and as that work takes place, you'll see activities from them start up again in the next few months, and I'll keep you posted on that. And I just wanted to say this past weekend, I attended a few fundraisers in town, including one for the food program at SFCI, one for Diabetes Canada, and one for our local dance academy. And I wanted to say thank you for our committed volunteers in Smith Falls who worked so hard to make Smith Falls a better place. These are all worthwhile efforts for great causes, and thanks to all those involved.
Thank you very much. Councillor Quinn, you've...
Oh, yes. Thank you. Thank you, worship. Just, I'll keep it quite short tonight, but the railway museum had their annual general meeting on March 18th, and they've got a very busy season coming up. But this weekend is Easter weekend. The trains are running, and the Easter bunnies will be there. Lots of activities going on. One other thing I wanted to bring up was the Catarac Way Trail are having a general cleanup of the trail on April 20th. So anyone that is interested, please let me know, and we'll go ahead and get the Smith Falls portion of the trail looking tip top. Thank you.
Thank you. Any reports over here? Seeing none. I've got a couple announcements myself. We have upcoming meetings this week. Wednesday morning, March 27th, 8:00 a.m. is a Police Service Board meeting. The Police Service Board will be considering the draft version of our new strategic plan, four-year strategic plan, so of interest to everybody in the community. Should be a good discussion at the board. That evening, 7:00 p.m., here in the council chambers as well, our Accessibility Advisory Committee is meeting. Public watching wants to either come in person or attend online. That's where everyone is welcome. Smith Falls For All Committee will be meeting again at 9:00 a.m. on late April 11th. We have no meeting scheduled. If you're trying to plan your calendar throughout the balance of this year, nothing for August 12th. No Cal then. That would conflict with the AML Conference. It'll be in Ottawa this year. August 19th council meeting is also being, no need for that at this stage, and the April 23rd Committee of the Whole meeting, so we'll finish early for Christmas. Special meetings will be arranged as needed for sensitive issues. And a reminder, town offices are closed next Monday, or Easter Monday, so they'll be closed from March 29th to April 1st. And I have one proclamation this evening. Purple Day, International Recognized Day for Epilepsy Awareness, March 26th, 2024. Whereas Purple Day for epilepsy was founded in 2008 by nine-year-old Cassidy Megan of Nova Scotia as she was motivated by her own struggles with epilepsy. Whereas Cassidy started Purple Day for epilepsy in an effort to educate others about the disorder and remind those living with seizures that they are not alone. Whereas epilepsy is one of the most common neurological disorders affecting approximately one in 100 people in Canada and 50 million people worldwide. Whereas Purple Day will help epilepsy organizations in Canada and around the world increase awareness, reduce stigma, and empower individuals living with epilepsy to take action in the communities. Whereas Purple Day reminds everyone that people living with epilepsy need understanding and acceptance, and deserve comprehensive care and access to innovative treatment options to effectively manage their disease. Now therefore, be resolved by Sean Panko, Mayor of the Town of Smith Falls, to hereby proclaim March 26th, 2024 as Purple Day in the Town of Smith Falls, and encourage our citizens to wear purple to support those living with epilepsy, and ask all to make an effort to learn more about epilepsy and fight the stigma. So moving forward on our agenda, we have a consent agenda with Councillor Miller, please.
Thank you. Moved by myself and seconded by Councillor Quinn, that Items and Consent Report 05-2024, received from the clerk, be received and adopted.
Thank you. Moved by Councillor Miller and seconded by Councillor Quinn, that Items and Consent Report 05-2024, received from the clerk, be received and adopted. Clerk Cassella?
Thank you, Mayor Panko. There's three items on the consent agenda this evening, the first being a resolution to receive the 2023 Statement of Remuneration and Expenses, the second resolution being the 2023 Smith Falls Drinking Water Summary Report, and the third resolution being the Housing Enabling Water Systems Fund Grant Opportunity. All three of these were discussed on March 11th at the Committee of the Whole Meeting.
Thank you. Would anyone like to pull any of these items up for further discussion? Seeing none. Motion for approval. All in favor? As carried. Thank you. On to other motions arising out of tonight's earlier Committee of the Whole meeting. Councillor Robinson?
Thank you, worship. Moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Brennan, that Council of the Corporation of the Town of Smith Falls direct staff to advance a claim with intact public entities for the complete demolition and proper disposal of the existing above-grade structures and all contents at 25 Old Mill Road, and further, that staff be directed to make arrangements to salvage and retain ownership of masonry elements of the 1868 stone and 1886 brick structures.
Thank you. Further discussion, councillor?
Yeah. You know, this has been a long time coming. And after numerous conversations with the insurance company and others, we're now in a position to move forward. So yeah, that's just telling the staff what to do. I do have some comments though, because I received a few emails from concerned citizens over the past few days, and I'd like to address their comments. I received a few emails from concerned citizens who I assume are local, but one mentioned he was a concerned Canadian citizen, so I'm not certain whether he's local or not, regarding our decision to demolish the structure. Although heritage buildings hold significant historical significance, there are instances where their preservation may not align with contemporary needs and development goals. In these cases, demolition becomes a viable option in promoting progress and addressing environmental and social concerns. Heritage buildings, especially those that are poorly maintained or damaged by fire, often face significant structural issues. The costs associated with restoration and maintaining these structures to meet modern safety standards can be substantially high. Demolishing such buildings eliminates the risk of collapse and ensures public safety, thereby justifying the decision. Preserving a heritage building may hinder economic revitalization efforts in a particular area. Repurposing or renovating these buildings might not attract the necessary investment or businesses that are crucial for local development. Demolition opens up opportunities for new construction projects that can stimulate economic growth, create jobs, and improve the overall prosperity of the community. So in conclusion, while heritage preservation is important, it should not come at the expense of progress, safety, economic growth, or environmental sustainability. The demolition of a heritage building is a decision that should be made weighing the costs and benefits to the community. In cases where preservation is not feasible or practical, as is the case here, demolition becomes a justified and necessary course of action to pave the way for a brighter future. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Maguire?
Thank you, worship. I'd like to ask for a recorded vote on this one. I'm a little bit surprised that the merits of heritage preservation are coming up in this because it's not part of the motion, but I think Smith Falls tried the progress train for 50 years. We tried it through the 60s, 70s, 80s, 90s, and when we look at our downtown, it didn't work. We don't have the economic potential for a square foot of commercial space that neighboring communities have that celebrated that heritage. So to pretend that we can tear something down and rebuild it and get the same kind of value out of it and get the same kind of tourist potential and get the same kind of draw to our community, it's just not rooted in the reality of our community. So I don't agree with that at all. I think that it's really unfortunate that it comes to this tonight. It comes down to a failure of multiple systems. Systems of the municipality not maintaining its heritage assets, not having an adequate insurance policy that covers stabilization or rehabilitation or different options, because we have a signed and stamped engineering document that says that it is less expensive to stabilize this structure, which has been backed up by Class D estimates than it is to demolish it. Furthermore, demolishing it has the potential tonight to create a permanent brownfield at that site. We talk about the development potential and how heritage buildings can impede the development potential. Well, I don't know what would impede the development of this site more than meters and metric tons of non-shrinkable fill, which is essentially concrete over contaminated soil. The insurance company's given us no information on what, you know, how they're going to stabilize that wall, how they're going to leave the site, if they're going to remove the contamination. But they have used this non-shrinkable fill option that could cover up the contamination. And without further information about that, I agree that we've been put into a corner in this situation where we, you know, we can't self-insure the property. We're not a big enough organization to self-insure, so we have to go with the insurance company's recommendation. It's extremely frustrating that they're choosing the more expensive recommendation. But if this site continues to not be developed because it's full of this unshrinkable fill, how much further ahead are we? And the insurance company will be paying for this through the higher premiums. We'll be paying for it for the unproductive land. And what are we going to have to show for it? So the fact we've got no leverage with the insurance company, no arbitration with them, it's incredibly frustrating to be in, and for that reason, I'm going to be voting against the motion.
Thank you. Your comments have been noted. We're going to record a vote. Councillor McKenna, you had a comment?
Fine, thank you.
We're hearing your comments.
I'll just comment myself because I was away on vacation when this came up. It came to me at the whole two weeks ago, and I, in many ways, I agree with Councillor Maguire. We have lost so much of our heritage, and whether that was buildings that were torn down for progress many, many decades ago, or beautiful heritage buildings that burned down in our community, largely in the 70s and the 90s, I guess the last one, I think. Until, of course, recently. So it's very unfortunate we don't have so many elements of heritage that we would prefer to have today. But from my perspective, this is about risk management, and this has gone on for almost a year. Numerous discussions between staff and insurance company and legal counsel, and numerous discussions with council as well about what we do with the site. And in the end, I think as stewards of the public purse and those most responsible for our community, we have to factor in risk. And the situation, unfortunately, would have preferred to see the heritage structures stand and destruction happen around there, definitely my preference. But I have to be responsible. And I think in this situation, the only responsible choice is to follow through with this decision. So I will read the, any further comments before I...
I have a comment.
It's Councillor Brennan.
Yeah, like you, Mayor, I was at the Committee of the Whole meeting two weeks ago, but I think everyone knew where I stood on this. I think that really, at the end of the day, it's unfortunate. It's a year later, but that being said, significant structure in our town, I think that we can take comfort in the fact that this council did their due diligence and explored all options. And as you just said, it's risk management. I have great hopes for that site. Probably one of the most beautiful properties in Smith Falls. And I know that we discussed earlier at Committee of the Whole the exclusivity agreement with a proponent, and I look forward to his proposals. And I know that there's an opportunity probably, definitely is an opportunity to commemorate what stood there before. So I'll be supporting this.
Thank you. It is moved by Councillor Robinson and seconded by Councillor Brennan. The Council of Corporation of the Town of Smith Falls direct staff to advance a claim with intact public entities for the complete demolition and proper disposal of the existing above-grade structures and all contents of 25 Old Mill Road. And further, that staff be directed to make arrangements to salvage and retain ownership of masonry elements of 1868 stone and 1886 brick structures, and recorded vote has been requested.
Worship. Regarding motion 9.1, 25 Old Mill Road, if council members could reply with either yea or dae. Councillor Brennan?
Yea.
Councillor Quinn?
Yea.
Councillor Miller?
Yea.
Councillor McKenna?
Yea.
Councillor Robinson?
Yea.
Councillor Maguire?
Dae.
Mayor Panko?
Yea.
Carried.
Thank you. Further into our business, item 9.2, Councillor Maguire. Back to you.
Thank you, worship. Just, I got the wrong agenda here. Moved by myself and seconded by Councillor McKenna, the Council of the Corporation of the Town of Smith Falls received the 2023 Building Division Report.
Thank you. Discussion, please.
Yeah, so we reviewed that at tonight's Committee of the Whole. Overall, our number of building permits were down from last year, but still well above the pre-canopy years, so still strong starts. Our building reserve continues to grow, so when we review the bylaw, hopefully this summer, we'll be able to look at the fees and options for spending that money, so.
Thank you.
Thank you to Mr. Willows and Mr. Brinkley for bringing that forward.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Comments? It's moved by Councillor Maguire, seconded by Councillor Robinson, that Council of Corporation of the Town of Smith Falls received the 2023 Building Division Report. All in favor? Carried. Thank you. And Councillor Robinson, you're up next.
Thank you. Moved by myself, seconded by Councillor McKenna, that Council of the Corporation of Town of Smith Falls supports the requested increase in density to Bellamy Farm Phase III subdivision. And further, the Council of the Corporation of the Town of Smith Falls adopt the draft approval conditions referenced in Appendix E of Report 2024-041.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Yes. This is going to increase the density in the, in Phase III portion of the development. It aligns well with the Billmore Homes initiative of the government, and there are several approval conditions which are referenced in the other report.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councillor Maguire?
Thank you, worship. I'm not going to support it tonight because of the draft conditions referenced in Appendix E. Although I fully support Parkland, I think Parkland's one of the most important parts of building a new community. My issue with this new neighborhood in town is that we were going to put up three post-stamped-sized parks that if we had planned this differently and if our processes were different, we could have had one beautiful park integrated with the Catarac Way Trail that really could have had a lot of meaning for that community. So I'm not going to support it tonight to make a stand against these little checking-a-box, putting a park here, sure it meets the planning requirements, but does it really meet the functional use of the community? I don't see these small little parks being used, so I'm saying no.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, it is, moved by Councillor Robinson, seconded by Councillor McKenna, the Council of Corporation of the Town of Smith Falls supports the requested increase in density to Bellamy Farm Phase III subdivision. Further, the Council of the Corporation of the Town of Smith Falls adopt the draft approval conditions referenced in Appendix E of Report 2024-41. All in favor? Opposed? And that is carried too. Thank you. And Councillor McKenna, you have the final piece of business tonight.
Yes, moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Robinson, that a bylaw lifting part lot control for lands described as blocks 10, 21, and 36 of registered plan 27M-102 to allow the division of the blocks into separate street townhouse lots. Be received on route of first time and taken as route a second time.
Thank you. Moved by Councillor McKenna and seconded by Councillor Robinson, that a bylaw lifting part lot control for the lands described as blocks 10, 21, and 36 of registered plan 27M-102 to allow the division of the blocks into separate street townhouse lots. Be received on route of first time and taken as route a second time. All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Discussion, Councillor McKenna?
Just, it's quite common for subdivisions like this as they set up the part lot control to divide up those blocks in larger units. And once the foundations are in place for the townhouses, the surveyors can get a more accurate and timely survey of the property. And I believe the draft surveys have all been completed on these and are awaiting this approval to register them.
Thank you. Anything further? Third reading, please.
Again, moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Robinson, that a bylaw lifting part lot control for lands described as block 10, 21, and 36 of registered plan 27M-102 to allow the division of the blocks into separate street townhouse lots. Be now run a third time and finally passed. Sign sealed and numbered 10536-2024.
Thank you. It is moved by Councillor McKenna, seconded by Councillor Robinson. Thank you. It is moved by councillor McKenna, seconded by councillor Robinson, that a bylaw lifting part lot control for the lands described as blocks 10, 21, and 36 of registered plan 27M-102 to allow the division of the blocks into separate street townhouse lots. Be now read a third time and finally passed, signed, sealed, and numbered 10536-2024. All in favor? Carried, thank you. Any inquiries or announcements? No, seeing none. We have no confirmatory bylaw. Councillor McKenna, you have your adjournment.
Yes, moved by myself, seconded by councillor Robinson, to council adjourn proceedings at 8:10 p.m. and stand so adjourned till the next duly called meeting of council.
Thank you. Moved by councillor McKenna, seconded by councillor Robinson, that council adjourns proceedings at 8:10 p.m. and stands so adjourned till the next duly called meeting of council. All in favor? We are adjourned. Good night, everyone.